This April 15, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. So I'm calling it to order. A quick announcement, due to the COVID-19 concerns and since Boulder County offices are closed through April 30, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted in the Planning Commission webpage. That's www.boco.org/pc. And there will be opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the dockets during the respective hearings. Portions of each item. And I'll provide instructions on that when we get to each docket on the agenda. But first, I'd like to take a quick roll call. So I will just call each name, and if you are present, please let us know. Ann Goldfarb.
Present.
And then Gavin was not able to attend, right? Sounds like it. Daniel Hilton.
Present.
Melanie Nieski.
Present.
I'm here, this is Alision Gargano. Mark Bloomfield.
Present.
Sam Fitch.
Present.
Sam Libby.
Present.
Todd Quigley.
Present.
Thank you for that. All right. So just a reminder to all of my fellow commissioners that to identify ourselves before speaking, and that we should speak slowly and clearly. We are still being recorded, and obviously with all the different technology, we want to make sure we're heard and understood. All votes on this docket will be roll call votes, like I just did our roll call for who's here today. Again, just for clarity. Oh, that's just for me. I'm going to keep the participant list open so that I can see who's speaking, and it's a good idea for others to do the same. All right, so our first agenda item is the minutes from last meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Or discussion? Or a motion?
I'd move, but this is Ann Goldfarb. I'd move that we accept the minutes.
Second.
Mark Bloomfield, I'll second.
Mark Bloomfield, second. Great. I'm going to go through the roll call list again. Ann?
Yay.
Daniel?
Hey.
Your name's written, Daniel, I know I would normally call you Dan. Melanie?
Yay.
This is Alision, yay. Mark?
Yay.
Sam Fitch?
Yay.
Sam Libby?
Yeah.
Todd?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. All right. The minutes stand approved as written. We have five dockets scheduled for today's meeting. And at this point, I'll take some time to explain the public hearing process. So there will be time to, opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the subject of the dockets during each of these items. So the order of presentation will be, first, we're going to hear from staff, as we usually do. Then we hear from the applicant, again, as we would in person. And then we'll move to hearing public testimony from many members of the public. So all questions and comments still need to be addressed to the board as if you were standing in front of us and looking at us. I'm the chair, and I will direct questions that arise during the hearing to the appropriate parties. Do my best to do that. Hopefully, other staff are listening and can help me. And then, once we're satisfied that we've heard all relevant testimony, we'll close the public hearing. And then, the commission, after the public hearing is closed, will discuss and vote. So the following procedure is kind of how we're going to approach public comment for each docket. So any member of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the homepage beforehand. And once those who signed up in advance have spoken, I'll call for those additional members who maybe didn't get a chance to sign up in advance to speak. So if you're on the computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, and address, and the docket number in the chat box, which is on the right of your via phone. You can unmute yourself with a star six and state your desire to speak at that time. And then we'll add your name to the list in the chat box so that we can keep everything in order and make sure you get to speak in order. When it's your turn to speak, we'll have you unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button, which is at the bottom of the Teams bar. Or if you're on the phone, that's star six again. And then, again, to start speaking, you state your name and address for the record. We do have a timing system. So in person, that's those lights that we usually use. But in this case, staff will warn you when you have 30 seconds remaining, so you'll get an audio cue instead.
Alision, this is Richard Hackett. We won't have a 30-second warning. We'll just have the alarm go off at three minutes, and it'll sound like this. Could you hear that?
I did.
Okay.
It might be a long alarm, but I like it. Okay. Please do not submit any comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. It's only, that chat box is only to be used for speaker signup. Just because it just won't offer you the equal opportunity to be heard. We can't track that chat box the same way, so please only use that chat box to sign up to speak. Everybody should remain on mute whenever possible to avoid echoes and background noise. The moderators can also mute you if we're having issues with sound. So they would prefer that you mute yourselves, but if someone mutes you, that's why. And members of the public will not be able to share their screens during public comment. You know, just as in person, right? We wouldn't have had slides, you'd be standing before us. Applicants, please have your presentations pulled up and ready to go, and I will announce when we're ready for you to present. And at that time, you will be able to share your screen. For members of the public, if you did have something you wanted to share, you can submit it. And, you know, as you would other written comments, so that we can see what you have in that way. Okay. All right. So our first item on the agenda is docket V-18-0005, the Van Meter Vacation. Right, did I?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. This is Rainy. I have too many documents open, sorry.
This is Rainy Ott. I will be presenting that if you're ready.
Yes, please do.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So Rainy Ott with Community Planning and Permitting. And I'm presenting docket V-18-0005, the Van Maitri Vacation at 20214 North 120th Street. So we're located east of Lafayette and Erie, out pretty close to Weld County. And Brady and Monica Van Maitri are the applicants and owners. It's owned agricultural. And this area was originally platted through the Capitol Hill Town Site, which was filed in 1907. The request is to vacate the southern half of Third Street and platted rights-of-way of Iowa, West Virginia, and Indiana Avenue, and an east-west-platted alley that runs between Third Street and Fourth Street of the Capitol Hill Town Site. So here is an aerial of the property, the two properties with 214 and 200. And then on top is an aerial, and then on the bottom is the Capitol Hill Town Site. Showing in blue, those are rights-of-way that were previously vacated through other dockets. And then in yellow are the rights-of-way that are being requested for vacation through this docket. As you can see, this is the Third Street right-of-way, and only half of it, only the southern half, is being proposed for vacation. That is to eliminate this structure encroachment into that right-of-way, and then leaving access on the north side for these north property owners. Here is a up-close of that encroachment, showing that if it was vacated to midway through Third Street, that structure would then meet setback requirements. And here, we are looking at the platted alley. It was never constructed and has just been used as part of the parcels. And then here, we're looking at the Third Street right-of-way. This fence is actually about halfway into the Third Street right-of-way, just shy of it, and that's that structure that is encroaching. And then here, we're looking north on Iowa and south on Iowa. And north and south on West Virginia Avenue. This storage container right here doesn't have a permit. And so one of the conditions of approval that staff is recommending is that they either remove the storage container or get a permit for it. And then north and south on Indiana Avenue. This docket was referred out to the typical agencies and departments. Responses of note that we've received are from the Engineering Development Review Team. The county engineer does support the vacation, as requested, as proposed, but they also recommend that the entirety of Third Street be vacated. However, the property owners to the north of Third have not consented to this review process. They're not involved in the review. And if all of Third was vacated, then private access easements would have to be between the property owners to continue legal access. As it's proposed, legal access is maintained for all properties. Public comments, we sent out 331 notifications, and we received one response in support, one that was voicing concerns about an impending sale of the 200 North 120th Street property that is now involved in the request. So that comment is really no longer relevant, since the applicant is now the owner of that property, and it's involved in the request. And then we also received one commenter who was voicing concerns about future structures and backdoor oil drilling in the vacated areas. Any new structures would be required to go through the site plan review process. And then, any oil and gas operations would be subject to Article 12. And so staff found that the request met all of the vacation criteria. Therefore, we recommend that the Planning Commission recommend conditional approval subject to the conditions listed in the staff recommendation.
Thank you. What questions do we have for staff? All right, hearing none. I'd like to invite the applicant to present.
Brady Van Maitri here, everyone hear me loud and clear?
Yes.
Excellent. No, we're just trying to clean up the property. And the storage container that Rainy mentioned, that basically we received a delivery, and that's there temporarily. So removing that storage container, it's going away anyways. And it was temporary fixture. And other than that, I'm available for questions.
What questions do we have?
What is the excavation for?
I'm sorry. So the questions are from the commission members, and please, commission members, state your name before you speak.
Oh, sorry. My name is Phil Sanchez, I live at 12240 Flag Drive.
Sorry, Phil, we're not ready for public comment yet. So these are just questions.
Oh, you're not?
Yep, but I promised to get to you. But we're just getting questions from the Planning Commission first. But I will get to you. I promise.
Sorry, that was.
No worries. We're all learning.
I guess, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn. But the excavations, my, I don't really know. I can suppose that there's been some soil pushed around in the back, and that was basically my son and his buddies making a bicycle track. Excavations.
Any questions from commission members? For the applicant? Okay, then I think we're ready for public testimony. Do we have a signup sheet? Or this, this is also a good time, if you weren't able to sign up on the sheet, to post in the meeting chat on the right, if you'd like to talk, and then I will call on you. Or if you're on the phone, you can unmute yourself now, and with a star six, and let us know you'd like to speak. Did the gentleman from earlier want to ask or have public comment? Or was there anybody else who had public comment?
Sorry, my name's Liz Dawson, I'm a neighbor on the south on 120th, 82 North 120th.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, is that?
Let me just, yeah, let me just double-check that we're ready to have you start. I just want to make sure from staff, it's okay, the timing's ready.
Yes, just have each person state their name and address for the record before they begin speaking. Thank you.
Okay, yes, go ahead then. Was it Ann, or?
Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure you were talking to me. I've never done this before, I'm a little nervous. Yeah, my name is Liz Dawson.
Liz, sorry.
I know there was someone who was trying to speak earlier, so I just didn't want to talk over him. And I wasn't able to get on to the link on my Chromebook, so I'm just on my phone. So I apologize about not putting my thing in. And I'm, my address, hold on, my address is 82, I don't know if it's in, North 120th Street. And I just, I read a little bit about this online. I didn't have a chance to do the comments, but about the equestrian, it's an equestrian area with camping, and I just didn't know if this was the appropriate time to ask about if there were, like, quiet hours at night, if the dirt bike track would be part of it, the whole thing, and that would continue, or that's just temporary. Anyway, those were things I was wondering, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we will go after the public comment period. We can go back and ask, well, restate your questions for applicant and staff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like, is.
Wrong item.
So is there anybody else that wanted to speak to this, to this docket?
Are you talking to Van Maitre or the equestrian?
The, we're talking about Maitre.
Okay. I was confused there.
Yeah, that's okay. I think, you know, this is new for everybody, so it's okay. But yes, if you would like to speak to the Van Maitre vacation, please state your name and address. And go ahead.
My name is just Phil Sanchez, I live at 12240 Flag Drive. Anyway, I just want to know what the future plans for the property were resolved, and it's just because it's basically my backyard.
Great, thank you. We will, we can pose that question to them, to the applicant, after we're done with public comment.
Okay.
So, thank you. Did you have anything else?
No, I did not, thank you.
Who would like to speak to, yeah, anyone else who would like to speak to the Van Maitre vacation? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close public comment on that Van Maitre vacation, and.
Sorry, can I ask one more question? This is Liz Dawson again.
Staff, I know we wouldn't normally do that, but Liz, it sounded like you wanted to talk about a different, a different one of our docket items, which we haven't gotten to yet?
No, it was the Van Maitre one, I'm just south of that. Maybe, I might have mistaken the description, but it was a similar question to the man from Flag Drive, basically.
Oh, great.
The use of it, the use of it, and the timing, and, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And then I just want to make sure, I don't think it does, in reading it and listening to you, but it doesn't involve that, that old railway right-of-way that was owned by, is owned by the city. I was just checking on that, too.
Okay.
That's right, adjacent to it, thank you.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you. All right, so I'm going to close public comment on this docket item now, and then turn back to some final questions to staff and our applicant. So I think, just start if, if either of you want to respond to some of those questions that we just heard, that would be a great way to start.
This is Rainy Ott. I'm the planner who reviewed it, and I just wanted to answer Liz's question. The railroad right-of-way is not involved in this request.
And then, Mr. Van Maitre, do you want to share just some thoughts on your plans for the property, or?
Oh, sure. Well, plans, I can't say that I, that I, that I, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball yet, but, you know, the purpose of the vacation is to, you know, there were, there are structures there that were permitted, permitted, built, inspected by the county, but do encroach on these easements. And currently, these encroachments, well, shoot, it, the buildings, the buildings in a roadway, one of the buildings in the roadway, there were some other things, other structures on site that were built without a permit. We're trying to clean this parcel up and define the boundaries of it. There's no, I'm sorry, I believe it was Philip was concerned about the oil and gas development. There's absolutely zero plans of that. And nor are there, nor are their plans on increasing the size of any of the existing structures. It's strictly to clean up these conflicts.
Thank you.
And, and no, no equestrian center.
Commission members, do we have any other questions? Or I'd like to open it for discussion in general?
Alision, this is Sam Libby. Just my discussion content would be, seems very straightforward to me. This is a clear, single or two parcel impact, which is not normally what we see from vacations, so it's nice and clean. The staff report's pretty clear that access is maintained, and there aren't any impacts to surrounding properties, so I'm supportive of it.
Thank you.
This is Ann Goldfarb, I would agree with Sam, straightforward, seems like it's no problems.
Mark Bloomfield, same.
Melanie Nieski, I'd also agree, just looking at what's going on here, it definitely makes sense to clean up the parcels and take care of that encroachment.
Do we have a motion or additional discussion?
Yeah, this is Sam, Sam Libby, I'll make a motion. I moved that Planning Commission recommend that the Port County Commissioners additionally approve docket V-18-0005, the Van Maitre Vacation, with the four conditions listed in the staff report.
Oops, I think two of you spoke at the same time.
Mark Bloomfield, I'll second.
I'm going to do a roll call vote again. I'll have us, the order memorized by the end, I'm sure. Ann Goldfarb.
Yay.
Dan?
Yay.
Melanie?
Yay.
This is Alision, yay. Mark?
Yes.
Sam Fitch?
Yay.
Sam Libby?
Yeah.
Todd?
Yeah.
Great, it passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next docket item. Docket SU-19-0011, Nighthawk Equestrian Center.
This is Rainy Ott again, for Community Planning and Permitting. I will share my screen. Can everyone see?
Yes.
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 All right. So this is SU-19-0011, Nighthawk Equestrian Center at 5555 Nelson Road. So we're located just northeast of Table Mountain, where it says "Property of U.S. Government", on Nelson Road. And Nighthawk Equestrian Center LLC is the applicant and owner, with Gideon Lafarge, one of the owners, representing. And it's owned agricultural. It's a little over 35 acres, and it is a legal building lot. EQ9958 recognized the existing equestrian center prior to an amendment to the code that added requirements to equestrian centers. And it's been operating under that approved level of use since 2000, which is 48 public events per year, no outdoor lighting or sound for the outdoor riding arenas. And there are about two to three employees that come and go from the property each day, and about 20 horse owners that have horses boarded on the property that come and go about almost every day. And there are 43 horses that are currently being kept. Some of those are retired, but most are being boarded. The total floor area existing on the property today is about 36,000 square feet. And the request is for an equestrian center with 12 public competitive events per year, each of those events being one to three days in duration. Clinics and other border-only events are by right and are in addition to these 12 events. And those would not be open to the public. Those would just be for the benefit of people that train and board horses there. For these public events, they are also requesting the ability to allow participants of these events to camp on-site. And they're also requesting some replacement and expansion of several structures and one additional agricultural worker unit. There is one unit existing on the property, they would like to have a second one. And the total resulting floor area, if all of that was approved, would be approximately 46,587 square feet. So here is an aerial map of the property. These front fields are for grazing, as are these back pastures. And as you can see, most of the structures are located pretty centrally around this area with the outdoor arenas. And then the access road comes off of Nelson, and it is a shared access with the neighbor to the north. It is designated as agricultural lands of statewide importance. And then I'm going to go through an inventory pretty quickly. So here is the main residence. The existing agricultural worker unit. A hay barn, a large stable, a smaller stable. This grooming barn, several tack rooms. Another tack room that is proposed to be replaced with a larger grooming barn, just like number six. This is the bedding storage that they're hoping to replace for a larger bedding storage, and you'll see why when I get to a picture of it. This is the indoor arena, and they are proposing to expand it out to the west by just a few feet, maybe 10 or 15 feet, and that would add about 900 square feet to the arena. And they're proposing to do that to increase the amount of spectator and judge seating without eating into the regulation-sized dressage arena that's inside. Then there are several judges' enclosures for the outdoor arenas. A few storage sheds. And a vehicle barn that they're hoping to replace with a little bit larger and a more operable structure for that use. And these are the temporary stalls. These are used during those public events for participants that are traveling to the site and bringing their horses with them. They keep their horses in these temporary stalls during the shows, and those are only used for those public events. And you'll note that this red rectangle right here, that is where the existing camping hookups are for electric and water, and that is where they are proposing to have trailer camping only for participants that come in for these public events that are going to have horses staying in these temporary stalls. Many of the trailers that are used for this purpose already have sleeping accommodations and some have bathroom accommodations inside. And so this would just allow them to stay on-site and with their horses. Then there are several loafing sheds. And the new accessory dwelling unit, the new agricultural worker unit is proposed in kind of the northeast corner. And staff does not support this location because it is so far away from the other structures. We are also not recommending approval for the second agricultural worker unit. Instead, we're recommending that the existing one be enlarged or replaced with a larger one in a central location. So some site photos, on the left is the entrance off of Nelson Road. And you can see that most of the structures are clustered right there in that central area. And then here's just a better view on the right side of the parking lot and that entrance to the equestrian center. And here is the existing bedding storage that they're hoping to replace. Obviously, it did not get a building permit. Many of the structures on this site did not receive the proper permits, and that is a condition of approval that we are recommending that they do receive their permits. This is what the replacement bedding storage would look like, something similar to this. And then this is that vehicle barn that they're hoping to replace with a slightly larger one. The main purpose in replacing this one is because these doors are too small to fit equipment in, and so it's kind of not really useful to them, and they would like to replace it with one that has taller doors. And then here are the temporary stalls as they exist. Right now, they are putting tarps over these during the show season and then taking them down. And the tarps blow away, they get ripped. It's labor-intensive. So they are requesting to put permanent roof coverings over the temporary stalls. It would kind of look like a carport with modular panels underneath as the stall spaces. And two of them would be 1,980 square feet. And then a third, the third one would be enlarged, and they would add a few stalls to it for a total of 3,060 square feet. And that would bring their total number of temporary stalls to 40, which they stated in their application that they needed for the public events. And here we are looking at the camping area with those camping hookups. And like I said about those trailers that have sleeping accommodations, there's one, for example. There's a bed right there in that. And then the temporary stalls are right there. You can also see in this picture a couple of structures on the property to the north. And then here is a close-up of the hookups. Here is the tack room that is proposed to be replaced with a larger grooming barn. And this is actually a picture of the grooming barn that's already on the site. They would pretty much just replicate this in that new location. And then the agricultural worker unit, they are proposing it, like I said, located in the northeast corner, which is pretty far away from everything else, as you can see. I, in the picture on the left, I'm looking out towards its proposed location, and on the picture on the right, I'm looking back at all the other structures. And then this is actually a picture of the existing unit, but the new unit that they're proposing would look similar. So this is the indoor riding arena that they're proposing to expand out. Again, it would be about 10 or 15 feet out to the west on this side. And then there's just a picture of the inside of the arena. So this was referred out to the typical agencies and departments. Responses of note from the Engineering Development Review Team, they said that legal access to the property has been demonstrated and that the existing driveway appears to comply with the multimodal transportation standards, although they're requesting an updated site plan for emergency access to the existing agricultural worker unit. And they did note that they agreed with the Transportation System Impact Study that was submitted with the application, which indicated that surrounding street network has the capacity to accommodate the proposed traffic. Although continuation of carpooling by clients and event participants is encouraged as well. We've sent out 17 notifications, and we did receive one comment in the last week. You should have received that in an email over the last few days. And that comment was concerns about past usage of the property, shared access maintenance, camping, and structures within easements. So special use criteria. Oh, I, sorry, I meant to also state that based on the new information that we received from this public comment, staff actually recommends several additional conditions, including no tent camping, locating portable toilets near existing structures and away from the property boundary, removing structures from easements, and that the applicant sign an access improvement and maintenance agreement for the shared driveway. So we reviewed it against the special use criteria. Of note is criterion number two, that the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. The area is comprised of many other agricultural operations and then the federal facility just across the street. Except for the second agricultural worker unit, the new and replacement structures are proposed clustered with the existing structures on the property, and they're infilling previously disturbed areas. The number of public competitive events is decreasing from 48 to 12 events per year. And then the trailer camping is for onsite participants only during those one-to-three-day events. We also found that the camping in this specific case is customary and incidental to the equestrian center use that includes hosting these public events. Criterion number three will be in court, in accordance with the Boulder County Conference of Plan. As I noted, it's designated as agricultural lands of statewide importance. And the comp plan has plenty of support for preservation of agricultural lands and diversity of agricultural uses. And agriculture is specifically recognized as an integral sector of the economy. This proposal satisfies some of the demand for horse boarding and training facilities without removing additional agricultural lands from current or future production. Therefore, we find it does not conflict with the comprehensive plan. Criterion four will not result in an over-intensive use of land or excessive depletion of natural resources. With the recommended conditions of approval for a revegetation plan, stormwater quality permit, and erosion control measures, as well as a manure management plan to ensure that livestock waste is properly handled, we do not find that this will be an over-intensive use of the land. Criterion six will not require a level of community facilities and services greater than that which is available. It's currently served by Left Hand Water, and the camping hookups were established under, which include water and electricity, were established under a valid building permit in 2008. They do not, however, include waste disposal, and so we have a couple of conditions related to that. Portable toilets have been provided on-site during these public events in the past, in addition to some bathrooms that are available in the indoor arena. So we're recommending a condition requiring the applicant to provide adequate waste disposal accommodations during all public events, and specifically providing accommodations for participants that are camping on-site, just in case they don't have waste disposal in their horse trailers. Criterion number 11 will establish appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental, and societal needs. We found that this proposal efficiently utilizes existing structures by adding on to or remodeling those that are still in good repair and only replacing those that are now obsolete or in poor condition. And it's an appropriate balance between the current needs of the applicant and clients of Nighthawk and conservation and the conservation and efficient use of resources for the future. For the additional provisions that are for agricultural worker units under provision A, the applicant shall adequately demonstrate the property's size and nature of the agricultural work requires a second household. As I stated, there is already an existing agricultural worker unit, though it is relatively small. There's also a main residence where one of the owners currently resides on the property. So there are already two households on-site, and they're requesting an additional household, an additional agricultural worker unit of 1,200 square feet. With the 43 horses, daily duties are split among one owner, two part-time employees that live on-site, and then several full-time employees that commute. But with horses, the nature of horses, 24-hour supervision is necessary for health and safety, especially of this many horses. So staff does agree that a second household, meaning the existing agricultural worker unit, is necessary, but we did not agree that a third household was necessary. Instead, we recommend that expansion or replacement of the existing agricultural worker unit be approved instead of a second unit. And so for those reasons, we recommend that the planning commission recommend conditional approval for docket SU-19-0011, subject to the conditions in the staff recommendation and with the additional four conditions below.
Thank you. What questions do commissioners have for staff? And maybe Rainie, if you could mute them, echoing, oh, you did it.
This is Sam Libby. I had two questions for you, Rainie. First, the, the third condition you added in the presentation around the easements, could you just give a more, a little more detail about what easements those are and explain what that means? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yeah, I will. Can you still see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
All right. So if, it's kind of blurry on here, but this is an easement right here. And structure 20, which is a shed, and very easily movable, that's not going to be a problem. And then these are, these temporary stalls are partially within that easement as well. And the applicant indicated that it would not be a problem to relocate those and ship them to the west.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question was about the accessory dwelling unit or agricultural worker unit. I'm not familiar with the land use code definition of that, but I assume that the resident in that unit would be attached to working on this property, right? Is that a requirement?
Yes. Part of the requirements is that they are substantially employed by the farming operation.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. This is Mark Bloomfield. Sticking with the agricultural dwelling unit. The proposal, I guess, I guess the question for me is, I know in the, in the docket, it indicates that staff recommended that I believe it could be expanded to 1,800 square feet.
Yeah.
And I guess my question is, there are a couple of questions there. One is, how is that 1,800 square feet determined? And is there any restriction in, in having that, that 1,800 square feet, let's say, be two units? Or, in other words, could they, could they actually have the staff that they feel is necessary within that 1,800 square feet, or is it, does it have to be one unit?
So the 1,800 square feet is in the code under the additional provisions for agricultural worker units. That is a maximum that is set by the code with an allowance for covered porches in addition to the 1,800. They, based on the definition of a family, they could have three unrelated ag workers living in one dwelling. Or they could have a various combination of ag workers with family members of the ag worker in the same dwelling unit. As far as being able to split the 1,800 into two dwelling units, that's not something that we have seen before or approved before. In fact, I, I couldn't find where we had approved a second agricultural dwelling unit on a property where one was already present, except under circumstances where different types of accessory dwelling units were approved.
Okay, and how does staff make the determination that, let's say, the, the primary residence plus the ADU allows for sufficient care? I mean, I have no idea how much it takes to take care of 43 horses, was it? But it doesn't seem like two people is a lot, especially if somebody needs to go on vacation or something.
Yeah, they currently have three people living on-site for that purpose. Staff really just has to make a judgment call based on the application materials that are submitted and the narrative that is submitted. And we felt that a larger agricultural worker unit that could accommodate of an extra worker or two was more appropriate than approving an entire separate household. Again, we have not in the past approved a second agricultural worker unit on a property that I'm aware of.
Hello? Yeah, I guess my concern is just, you know, if you have a family of three and one of them is the worker, then that's, that's pretty, I mean, I agree that the ADU kind of out at the field is, is not a really great option. I'm just wondering how we can have flexibility, especially like, given like current circumstances. I, I know I have a friend who has a horse. given like current circumstances. I know I have a friend who has a horse boarded about a half mile away and she's not allowed to go there right now. And so allowing for the flexibility of additional people onsite. I mean, who knows how long it's going to go on for and how often it's going to happen in the future.
And as the planning commission, you could find differently from staff and find that a third household is appropriate in this situation.
Okay, I think that is my questions. It sounds like your the easement adjustments for the temporary stalls addresses the neighbors. I believe it's the neighbor to the north, their concerns about, you know, horses kicking the stalls and waking them up at night.
That doesn't really address that, but the residence on the property to the north is pretty far north. So go back to this aerial map. This is the residence. I'm pretty sure. Yeah.
Okay, I thought in their comments, I thought they said that they were closer to the property boundary.
There may be an accessory dwelling unit in this barn. I'm not sure about that, though.
But basically you're, you're getting all of the structures on the the Nighthawk property with, you know, with appropriate easements. And it, and it sounds like this whole effort is to kind of bring everything up to snuff as far as code and is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, and the applicant, Gideon LaFarge, is present and has some comments on that. I believe that is his goal, their goal, the owners.
Great, okay. Those are my questions. Thanks.
This is Ann Goldfarb. I have a couple of questions. In regard to that noise issue that the adjacent property owner raised, I would assume that there are ordinances that would cover noise at night.
Yes. And there is a condition of approval related to that, that all persons on the property, especially those camping onsite overnight, must abide by the noise ordinance of Boulder County.
Okay. And then you also mentioned when you were talking about the size of the agricultural worker unit and one versus two and your, your discussion of that, you mentioned different types of accessory dwelling units. So are there other kinds of accessory dwelling units that you could either call something that they wanted to build? Or is there, is there any way around that 1,800 square feet and the one unit that you're talking about?
So there are three different types of accessory dwelling unit that are permitted by the land use code. One is the agricultural worker unit, which is specifically to house agricultural workers on a farm and provide housing for them where they're working. The other type is historic, where you have a historic structure that the county would like to preserve and kind of a reward for the applicant or owner for keeping it is they can turn it into an accessory dwelling unit. There are no historic structures on this property that would be eligible for that type. The third type is a family care unit where you have a family member who either needs more supervision for their health or a person who's living in the accessory dwelling unit who is supervising a person who's living in the main residence. Again, for health and care purposes. And so that doesn't really meet the code here either. And the code does not specifically say that we can't approve two accessory dwelling units for agricultural workers. It's just, again, we've not seen that precedent set.
Thank you.
Rainey, this is Melanie Neskey. One quick question. I was just hoping you could clarify the, I think it's the first condition that you added. Just curious as to why you clarified for no tent camping as opposed to, I'm assuming, trailer camping.
So that was something that resulted from the public comment we received. It seemed that they were against tent camping and it is not the applicant's intent, sorry, to have people camping in tents on the property. As I explained, most of the people who are coming and going for these public events are bringing their horses in by trailer and many of those trailers have sleeping accommodations in them. And so we're really just talking about hooking up trailers and maybe some RVs to those camping hookups for use by participants in the public events.
Thank you.
This is Dan Hilton. I have a question about the interpretation of the agricultural worker unit and whether there can be more than one. So when I read the additional provision 4-516.g6a, it says the applicant shall adequately demonstrate that the property size and nature of the agricultural work on the property requires a second household for labor onsite. Is it, is staff not interpreting that to mean only one other?
I don't, I don't think we made a really hard interpretation on that. It's, and we, based on precedent not existing for having another second worker unit, that is really where we got there. But it's, we didn't ever decide if the code specifically allowed one or not because we found that a second one was not necessary.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
I have just one more. This is Ann Goldfarb. We know the number of horses that they're boarding there and that they want to have events. Could you just, do you have any idea how the size of this facility compares with other facilities in the county? So others, similar kinds of facilities? In terms, I guess in terms of number of horses and activities at the property.
So there are several other equestrian centers throughout the county. I did not specifically research them about the size and the number of horses. There is another facility on Nywatt Road that they, they were approved for an agricultural worker unit on a, it was about a 30-acre property and they are only going to keep about eight to 10 horses. But then at the other end of the scale, you have the horse rescue, which has, I think, maybe 100 or more. But I think that property is pretty large. Another planner on the call might have a little more information about that property if you're interested.
The reason I'm asking is, I was just wondering in terms of staffing, what other facilities might do and that the horse rescue that you're talking about, I think maybe that, although larger in terms of the number of horses and the size of the property, it sounds like, do they, do they have volunteers who come and work there? Is that in addition to paid staff? So is that a different kind of staffing arrangement?
I, I actually do not know any details about how that operation is. And actually now thinking about it, I'm, I don't believe that they allow training at that facility or boarding. It is really just a horse rescue. So that was a bad example.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for staff before we move on to hear from the applicant? Okay, then I would like to invite Gideon Lafarge, the applicant for the Nighthawk Equestrian Center to speak.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
This is Gideon Lafarge. Thank you for the chance to talk to you. I just want to talk on a couple of items that have been discussed so far. The first and probably most important one is about the ADU. The existing house on the property has one of the owners who's an equestrian. And in the ADU that we already have, we have one of our part-time staff living there who's also very experienced with horses. Our request for the third building was in the concern that in the middle of the night, when horses always like to get sick, that if one of those other two people are on vacation or sick with coronavirus or whatever, that the emergency, if it requires more than one person, all of a sudden now we're hoping that we can get somebody else onto the property fairly quickly with, and you know, time matters with the horses. So for our point of view, one of the main reasons we wanted that second ADU is to have more staff onsite 24 hours a day so that we always can take care of the horses regardless of when they get sick. It is really for us about the safety, both of the, of the horses and of the people. And I'm happy to answer any more questions about the ADU that you may have. We did initially locate that out in the field where you saw, not realizing there was a desire to cluster it with the other buildings, both to make it more private from the neighbors to give, literally it's twice as far away. And also to give us a better access to a large open field for the septic system. We are certainly happy to look at moving it to a more central location. I think we can figure out how to make the septic work as well as how to, how to find a place for that building to work. The ADU we have currently is suitable only for a couple. So if we ever got a family all living who was a staff, we would have to replace that existing ADU at the very least. In terms of the camping, one of the main reasons we wanted to clarify that we intend to use the camping, what we want to use the camping for is it is in fact safer for when we have the guest horses during the shows because then their owner riders are right there in case, again, something happens to their horse. So we felt it was a better solution for everybody on that because we simply don't have additional staff at that kind of need during the shows. In terms of the overall approach, we are trying to get this property back up to a professional level of repair and, and operation. We are willing to give up quite a few shows to make sure that we have less of an impact on the neighbors as well as to make sure this property runs well. We did have a chance to read through the letter that our neighbor to the north sent us, the Rubens. And we certainly understand their frustrations from some of the concerns that previous owners have had. We've only owned the property for about a year, so we are new to the ownership of this equestrian facility. We did run a couple of horse shows last summer. We didn't have any complaints. We had a lot of compliments on how well the shows ran, so we feel that we're heading in the right direction. The letter does refer to a buffer zone along the northern property edge for riding academy activities. From our point of view, the only things that are in that buffer zone are the pastures, the temporary stalls, the trailer area and storage buildings, which are all either passive or very sporadic uses. So we feel that the only active use that's even close is that indoor arena. We are perfectly happy in terms of the camping to go to just the vehicle camping, if you will, and to not have any tents. It was never our intention to have tents. They certainly do allow for more noise to get out to the neighbors and we don't want that. We're happy to relocate the portable toilets. We certainly understand the importance of that. And then just the last one I wanted to touch on was the driveway absolutely struggles when it rains. We do have long-term plans to continue to maintain and improve the driveway. And we're happy to sign an agreement to say that we will continue to maintain and improve that road. So that's not really a concern. If you have any other specific questions, I'm happy to try to address them.
Thank you. What questions do commissioners have for the applicant?
It is Sam Levy. A question about the existing agricultural worker unit that you have. One of the staff recommendations was that you look at expanding that or adding on to that. Is that a possibility with the current structure or is that going to require a replacement?
It's basically a mobile home, a modular home. So there really isn't a way to expand it the way it is that would be cost effective. We'd be far better off just replacing it. And at that point, it would make more sense to replace it with a unit that was larger. The unit that's there has one bedroom that is about big enough for a queen size bed and one bedroom that you can get a twin bed in. But I wouldn't want to grow up as the kid in that bedroom. So it's really appropriate for a young couple. So if we wanted to expand on it, frankly, we would take the, take the offer that they've made and make it a much bigger one. But that doesn't address the issue of having appropriate staff for the middle of the night emergencies.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is, this is Ann Goldfarb again, in reference to that agricultural worker unit. Am I correct that that's about 1,200 square feet currently? Is that right?
It's about 850 square feet.
Oh, 850, okay.
It's a small little unit.
Okay, yeah. And so if you were to, so right now you have, how many people living in that?
It's a young couple. Only one of them has got experience with the horses. The other one is her boyfriend.
Okay, all right. And then, and then if you had a second, if you were allowed to have a second unit, what would you do in terms of size for that? And where would be a better location than out in the field? Is there a place that you could put it closer to the other buildings?
We would certainly look at getting a slightly larger unit because then we could have a family in it. We have two of the, two of the employees that we have right now do have families. So if we're going to be able to attract and provide housing for them, they obviously want to live with their kids. So that's going to be an important amenity is to have probably a two or three bedroom, a real size bedroom unit. In terms of where we would locate it, that's not something I have given a lot of thought to. But I would say that it could go behind the bedding building or even quite near the other existing ADU or north of the existing home. There's probably two or three locations scattered around the existing home where we could, we could tuck it in there and still figure out a way to get in the new septic system.
And then maybe a follow-up on that with Rainey. Have you had an opportunity to take a look and see if any of those locations might be appropriate if, if we were to decide that another agricultural dwelling unit would be, agricultural worker unit would be appropriate?
Staff would be comfortable with pretty much any location that is clustered with the other structures. There's, you know, a circulation road that goes through there, so access would be in that area. And in fact, there is a condition of approval that I believe the way it's worded is if the existing unit is replaced with a larger one and has to be relocated to fit the leach field, that staff would administratively review the new location. And I would say that the same thing would be done if it was a completely new additional unit.
Okay.
And I have a question for Gideon. So, you know, it's just, it sounds like because of the affordability of the mobile And I have a question for Gideon. So, you know, it's just, it sounds like because of the affordability of the mobile homes, that that's why the one larger one replacing the existing one is is not an option for you or?
We certainly could replace the existing one with a larger one, and that was what we would do if we got to the point where we wanted to be able to have more than just a couple living there, but it doesn't address for our, from our point of view, the issue of having a third person on property with equestrian experience. So that if, say, the owner that lives in the home is on vacation, we're not down to just the one who may or may not be sick that day. We're just trying to make sure we have redundancies in our staff so that when that horse does get sick in the middle of the night, we have enough people there to deal with it.
Yeah, I was just thinking about attached units versus separate units was really where my head was at.
Honestly, I have not looked at or thought too much about whether or not we could make that a larger unit. We certainly could put a bigger unit in there or add on to that unit. But if I'm a young couple or I'm a family, I don't know that I want to share that with another young couple or family. That'd be just something we'd have to take a look at. We're obviously much more interested in employing people who have roots in their families than we are just sort of young guys who might be gone in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. What other questions do we have? Okay, hearing none. I am going to open for public comments, and we do have one person signed up for this docket. So we will start with Gary Rubin. And then after Gary speaks, anybody, anybody else who would like to speak is welcome to sign up in the chat on the right. And we can, or unmute yourself real quick and we'll get you on the list.
This is Gary Rubin. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Gary Rubin, 5599 Nelson Road. I'm the neighbor to the north. And I appreciate the information that you sent and from hearing from the applicant. A couple of comments. I think you all got my letter, which pretty much expresses how Sidney and I feel about the entire affair. It's evolved over the years and it is what it is. We feel bad that so many structures, really dense layout have been jammed kind of to the north and to the west against our access line and our property line. There is a family, a caretaker family of ours, an accessory dwelling we have that is 25 feet north of the property line, and that is that building that the staff pointed out. So there is a family right there that does hear horses kicking in those temporary stalls when they're occupied. And that is a pain. I don't know what Gideon can do about it. I don't know how you stop a horse from kicking other than by shooting them, and we don't want to do that. It's always been a problem and it still is. Regarding the accessory dwelling, I agree with staff that, and I think Gideon agrees too, that it would be best to keep buildings consolidated in amongst the others. If your if your need is for more bodies there to help with the work, I think your options are to have a facility that up to three unrelated people could live together, probably without a family. Or maybe the the solution would be to move that temporary or move the accessory dwelling a little bit to the north where there's more room and build a duplex. So you have the same electrical connection, the water connection, sewer connection in a consolidated building, but you can actually have more people occupying it. Regarding the camping, I believe that the these hookups for trailers were put in there by permit when they requested that they wanted some connections for trailers. And now you're going back and asking for legalized camping there. What you can do about it, we would have liked to seen that whole affair brought more into the central area of your property, of the applicant's property, rather than jammed against our access driveway and our south property border. Again, it is what it is, and we're not happy about it, but I don't think there's a lot that can be done about it. I appreciate your offer to look after the driveway better and maintain that like it hasn't been so often. I made some comments in my letter about that. Regarding emergency help, if you are in a crisis over there, you know, we've got four people on our property that are ready and willing to come over and help you move horses if there's a fire or I think the vets are not that far away if you have an emergency for for a sick horse. So don't do your the long-range there. We can certainly help if you need need help. That's really all I I have to say. Again, I I appreciate the interaction I've had with you folks the short time that you've been out there and been together, and I hope you turn out to be a hell of a lot better than the people that have preceded you. Sidney and I do feel bad that that whole thing has evolved over there, but that's not your fault. And we will make the best of it together, I guess.
Thanks. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this docket?
Gary Rubin here again. Can I, I forgot one thing.
We can do a time check. Did he have any time left?
This is Richard Hackett, staff. No, his time was up.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so I'm going to close public comment and open it back up for commissioners to ask additional questions of staff and the applicant. Or just open for discussion?
I've got some discussion.
Yeah.
This is Mark Blumfield. You know, I'm just in thinking, I totally get where staff is coming from, from the perspective of like there there isn't precedence as far as an additional ADU. It certainly seems to me that, you know, we've been talking as a commission about may supporting local agriculture and and local businesses. And it actually seems to me like, you know, having an additional ADU there actually seems to me like it would support a bunch of other things too, like reducing traffic and vehicle miles travel and whatnot. If you have two ADUs, they're going to be required to have workers in them. And that means that, you know, you're not going to have workers driving, you know, they, I think, I forget what the number was. They said they had like four to six additional full-time workers. So now one of them is actually going to be on the property and not not driving to and fro. And I'm certainly sympathetic with the, A, the idea that in the middle of the night, if one of the residents is not there, that you want to have two others. And also that you want to have folks with some stability. And that implies sometimes, not always, family. So given that there isn't a restriction and given that, like I said, we've talked about, you know, worker housing and providing for that, you know, it also addresses some of the affordability issue of workers that can actually afford to live in Boulder. So it seems like, I don't really see a downside. I'm certainly open to anybody else if they if they, you know, see a downside that I'm not seeing. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I have to say, Mark, this is Leishen Gargiano. I was thinking very much along those lines as well. I think as far as affordability. Sorry, I think I froze a little bit. But as far as affordability, right, and and having staff housing, if, since it does sound with the rest of the buildings.
Leishen, this is Richard Hackett. You cut out. Can you repeat the last 15 seconds?
Sure. I was just saying that I I just very much agree. I think, given that there does seem to be opportunity to cluster and that we are concerned about affordability and availability of housing for agricultural workers, I am inclined to approve a second building.
This is Dan Hilton. So can we look back at the code and the additional provisions? I just want to make sure that I am clear and that we all agree on how to interpret these. So.
Is that in the slides?
This is in the packet. This is on page seven and eight, starting with the additional provisions for an agricultural worker unit under article 4-516.g6. When I read this, it all seems to me to be about a a single other ADU. The applicant shall adequately demonstrate that the property size and nature of the agricultural work on the property requires a second household for labor on site. And then that's a the applicant should adequately demonstrate that the unit is necessary for operating the farm. C. E, the accessory dwelling is limited to 1,800 square feet. The way I'm reading this, it it seems pretty clear that it's talking about an additional ADU, not multiple other possible ADUs, more than one. Do do the other commissioners feel differently?
I see what you're saying, and to Rainey's point, there is no precedent for having more than one.
This is, yeah, I agree with the fitting. I think it's a special use view that can extend beyond what the land use code provides, so that we have the option of suggesting that a second one is fine, in my opinion, but I would agree with your reading of that certainly.
Yes. Yeah, I would agree that the way that it's written, it does sound like one. This is Mark. And 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 I'd be curious to what the actual code says in terms of allowing that, I guess, if there's more information.
Those were quotes from
What's that?
Those were quotes from the code, I believe.
Correct.
It sounds like we could, we could go. Yeah, and it sounded like when Rainey was talking before, and we can ask her again, but that it doesn't preclude a second one. It's just hasn't been done before.
Right.
Yep. This is this is Ann Goldfarb. I'm thinking that because of the intensive nature of the work that the people need to do with the horses, I can certainly understand the the need for having more workers on site. And I don't know that I asked, Mark, you mentioned possibly, I think, a duplex. And I was wondering the same thing, whether a duplex would be a possibility and whether that can be more than 1,800 square feet so that you would have fewer buildings, but would accommodate the additional workers that the applicant is seeking. So I guess that's
Oh, sorry. This is Leishen. So you're saying still two, you know, two units, but they would be attached?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at with my question too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'm wondering if that's a possibility.
So this is Mark. I would definitely support that as a a way to keep things consolidated and and, you know, allow them to have the two units, but that that would still be two ADUs.
Right.
And so it's still, we still have the question of, like, is this allowed for the code? And or is it just something that, you know, is something that it was written for one, but doesn't exclude two? Or is it?
This is Rainey.
Go ahead.
If you if you would like, I can try to help out here.
Yes, please.
So SU does allow you to consider two ADUs. And you're correct, as a duplex, each side of the duplex would be one accessory dwelling unit, and each one could be up to 1,800 square feet if approved at that size.
Thank you. That helps a lot. This is Leishen. Okay, so it sounds like we're sort of toying with allowing the second unit and then toying with, should we ask for them to be attached? Sounds like we all feel pretty good about bringing all the buildings close in with each other.
Leishen, you cut out again for a second, but I think you were saying being attached. It sounds like we're all rough, or people have spoken so far, I'll say. We're interested in the option of flexibility around the second unit, but that location and thing is the is a topic we want some more focus on, and that's something that we'd have to ask the applicant to go back and look at options for, I think. And it also reflects the comment, comments from the public, including the neighbor about the sighting of the proposed structure, the proposed secondary ADU to the northeast of the property. So I personally would be open to making some changes to the conditions and suggesting that the applicant will work on a revised location for that in their next review, if that's an approach we can take.
So we, so you're proposing sort of adding that we say a second unit would be an optional, but they'd have to go through review for location and type? Which they would probably have to do anyway?
Yeah. Prior to the Board of Commissioners here.
And then we could make suggestions to staff within that that attached is ideal and clustered being second to that.
Just like we've done that kind of thing before, so yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So Sam. Sam, this is Mark. Just to clarify, are you proposing approval with modified condition or are you proposing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there additional discussion on that or is are we ready for a motion?
This is Mark. I guess I'm curious as to where other commissioners are on this.
Hi, this is Melanie Neskey. I'm just looking at the proposed the proposed conditions here. I believe it's page 15 of the staff packet. And it looks like condition number eight, the proposed 1,200-square-foot new accessory dwelling unit is not approved. And then also, condition number 12, if the existing agricultural working worker unit is relocated to accommodate a larger structure, an updated site plan, including emergency vehicle access requirement, must be submitted to community planning and permitting department for review and approval. I'm just wondering if maybe if we modify those two that might address that second unit that we're looking at, that it would would allow the planning and permitting department to review the the location, the the size of the structure and the access to it. Does that sound about right?
Mark agrees.
This is Sam. If I was going to make a motion, it would be including changes to a number of those conditions for staff to look at before the board review.
This is Ann. I'd agree with that.
Yeah, this is Todd. I'd be on board with that as well.
Okay, I'm trying to make a motion here. If you guys are good with that. So I move that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Commissioners conditional approval of docket SU 190011, Nighthawk Equestrian Center, with the removal of condition eight, which refers to the disapproval of the additional ADU. and adjustments to conditions eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen that would address our interest in allowing a secondary ADU, but looking at the setting of that to be closer to the existing structures, if not possible, to create a, some kind of duplex in it.
This is Sam Fitch. I'll second that.
And I just want to check, this is Leishen Gargano. I want to check with staff that that language works.
Yes, that, we should be able to work with that.
Okay.
And this is Mark. Does that also get, take care of all of the, I think there are some additional recommendations based on the the neighbors' comments?
Including in that, in the addition of the four conditions in the staff presentation from today.
Sam, I think we'd need to second a, a second time because we just changed it a little bit again.
I seconded a second time.
Okay, I will roll call us.
Oh, are we gonna have any?
Yeah, more discussion. Yes, more.
Let's see, so did that, Sam, did your proposal explicitly say two ADUs? Your modified conditions?
I'm not sure. I said a lot of things. I think that's clearly the intent from our discussion, which is part of the record. I'm happy to re- remove if we'd like to, to be more fair.
And then the, the, do we need to be more explicit about the square footage that, of each or, or the sum square footage?
I thought about that. It's a good question. My opinion was that the, the code already defines the square footage of the accessory worker unit, agricultural worker unit at eighteen hundred. And so we would just rely on a second agricultural worker unit following under the same conditions.
And I have to agree, Sam, that's what I was thinking too. This is Leishen.
So we'd be proposing, we'd be going from a current situation of eight hundred square feet of ADU to thirty six hundred square feet.
I don't think we're saying thirty six hundred feet's ideal, and it would have to go, this is Leishen again, through staff, you know, the, the process. So that, yes, technically, I think it would allow up to that size.
My, my only comment on that, Dan, I think it's a good point, is that it's not, from the application, that the applicant is not looking for optimized square footage of any accessory dwellings right now. It's not like they're looking for more options there. So I think it would be responsible. I think back to Mark's original commentary around the reasons why this is valuable, around affordability, allowing the options for more staff to be local facility, and also reducing traffic to and from all those still supports. But I agree, it's a high number of potential size, but to me, it's not. The location's more of a concern, which is why I think the clustering is a bigger change than the size. Anyone have? I have a question. I can change the motion if you want.
Did you want to just remove in order to clean it up a little and make things clear?
So I move that the commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners conditional approval of docket SU nineteen zero zero one one in Equestrian Center with the twenty seven conditions in the staff report, as well as the four additional conditions from the presentation. But also in our recommendation, we recommend removing the eighth condition and support the request for a second accessory dwelling unit. There would be an agricultural worker unit, and that would require changes to conditions nine and eleven through fifteen. Also recommending that the location of that unit be considered as a clustered location, host of the buildings, rather than the current proposed location to the northeast of the property.
Sam, did you want a second?
I'm happy to second a third time.
Do we have additional discussion now that we've changed it? Okay, then I will do a roll call. Anne.
Yay.
Dan.
Yay.
Melanie.
Yay.
Leishen, yay. Mark.
Yay.
Sam Fitch.
Yay.
Sam Libby.
Yay.
Todd.
Right.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Our third item will be docket SU dash one nine dash zero zero one five, Excel Energy Community Solar Garden.
And it's me again, Rainey Ott, with Community Planning and Permitting. Let me share my screen. Can everyone see?
Yes.
All right. So this is SU nineteen zero zero one five, Excel Energy Community Solar Garden at eighteen oh eight North Sixty Third Street. They're located just north of Arapahoe, outside of the city limits of Boulder, just west of Seventy Fifth Street. The applicant and owner is Excel Energy, and their agent is John Fitzpatrick with Pivot Energy, zoned agricultural, it's thirty four acres, and it is a legal building lot. It is currently vacant. The proposal is for an approximately twenty acre ground mounted solar energy system of four megawatts to serve low income subscribers through the Solar Rewards Community Program. Here is an aerial of the property, and I'll show another map that does a better job showing access, but access is taken through this road right here and then circulating through the property. Also of note is this ditch along the east boundary. And you'll also see that there's some vegetation existing along this border right where these two residences are, residences are closest to the property. And then there's a third one. There's a fourth residence that's a little farther away and has some owns, has some screening on site. But visual impacts is a concern, and I'll, I'll get to that later from these residences. The comprehensive plan map shows some riparian and wetlands areas on the property in the project area. And then it has, it's partially designated as ag lands of local importance, but none of those lands are within the project area. Public lands, to the north, is an open space and mountain parks property. And that is actually used mostly for their basis of operations. And then Boulder County owns Legion Park Open Space to the south. And if you're wondering, this color just means that it's a public utility. It's not open space. So the surrounding area is pretty diverse uses and zoning districts. There's some general industrial to the south and to the north, as well as the Valmont Generation Station, which is zoned in general industrial to the west, some commercial, and then, of course, the open space, and then a residential area to the east. So here is the site plan overlaid on top of the aerial with some topography, as well as the configuration of the panels that is proposed. And here's some elevations of the panels. These are tracking panels, so they have a little motor, and the panel will tilt throughout the day to follow the sun. Looking at site photos, this on the left is the entrance to the Valmont Generation Station off of North Sixty Third. And this is how the site will be accessed. And then you drive through the Valmont Generation Station. And then between the two reservoirs, and this, this mound that you will see in the background of many of the pictures, that is the open space from Open Space and Mountain Parks. And it's this picture, we're skirting just to the south of that open space. This fence is the boundary. And you'll note that there is an osprey nest platform on the open space to the north. Here is a corner of the panels, the northeast corner of the project site, looking to the southwest. And then from the southeast corner, looking northwest. Southwest corner, looking northeast. Again, open space is right there for reference. And then the northwest corner, looking southeast. And then here, standing kind of in the middle of the property, looking east towards those residences, these are the three closest residences. And you can see there's some existing vegetation, but it's sparse through here. And one of the recommended conditions of approval is for Excel to fill in some of these gaps in vegetation with some landscape screening. So this was referred out to the typical agencies and departments. Some responses of note came from Open Space and Mountain Parks, mainly that there, they had concerns about impacts to two active osprey nests. One of those nests is the one that I pointed out that's located on their parcel. And then another one is located on Excel property. It was on the subject property in the project area and has actually already been relocated to an alternative location north of Open Space and Mountain Parks property, and it's along the reservoir shoreline, still on Excel property. And it's actually probably a better location for that nest as far as the birds are concerned. They also requested increased setbacks from their osprey nest and that construction activities be restricted to the non breeding season. Instead of increasing setbacks, staff is recommending a condition to add a third osprey nest platform that Excel needs to install around the shoreline of the reservoir to give the birds more options for nesting if they're bothered by the solar panels. From Boulder County Parks and Open Space, there were concerns about the amount of grading, visual impacts, and wildlife movement. And they requested that grading not occur during wet conditions and that prairie dog removal be passive and temporary. And then I wanted to point out this referral response because it came in a little bit late. You should have received that in email within the last week. The Office of Sustainability, Climate Action, and Resilience supports the application, and since it will benefit income qualifying citizens and further the county's sustainability goals. We sent thirty five notifications to adjacent property owners, and we received four, four comments, well, comments from four of the adjacent property owners that voiced concerns about wildlife habitat, visual impact, and property value decline. So it was reviewed against the special use criteria. Of note is criterion number two will be compatible with the surrounding area. There is a mix of industrial, open space, and residential uses surrounding the site, and the site is directly adjacent to both private residential and open space, though there is no indication that the system will cause any noise, air, or other pollution that would negatively affect the adjacent residential properties. And the intensity of activities on site will be minimal for the duration of the system's life. Also, installation does not necessitate, necessitate a substantial amount of grading or alterations to the existing topography. Criterion number three will be in accordance, in accordance with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. Construction activities should be restricted to the non breeding season. And as I stated before, we've asked, we are recommending that an additional osprey nest platform be constructed. Also, to help protect those environmental features, construction fencing around the project area to prevent degradation of the wetlands and riparian areas, and a prairie dog management plan for passive relocation and temporary relocation during construction. And then finally, a fence is proposed around the project area that staff found to be unnecessary since the entire Valmont Generation Station complex is fenced in, and they have a restricted access protocol. And so that addresses the building code requirements for fencing of a solar facility like this. And so we're recommending that the fence around the arrays themselves is eliminated, and just the perimeter fence is relied on for security. Criterion number four will not result in over intensive use of the land. It's approximately twenty acres of disturbance. And solar arrays don't typically necessitate much grading. So the anticipated amount of earthwork is only a hundred and sixteen cubic yards. However, just to make sure that grading is minimized to the extent possible, staff is recommending an updated grading plan just to see where some of that grading might be eliminated. And then we're also recommending a revegetation plan in conjunction with a weed management plan since there are several noxious weeds that were found on the site to ensure that disturbed areas are restored properly. Criterion nine will be adequately buffered or screened to mitigate any undue visual impacts. The panels are only eight feet tall, and they are visible from open space and private residential properties, but not from any public roads. So staff is recommending additional screening along the east border to fill in some of those gaps in the existing vegetation. Due to the difference in elevation, the view from Legion Hill Open Space can't really be buffered. The addition of vegetation along the southern border, you would just be able to see over it. But this is not a very pristine view in the first place. The Valmont Generation Station is just to the left of this picture. Criterion number eleven will establish an appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental, societal needs. It will produce clean renewable energy for low income citizens between, for between twenty and forty years. And then we, we do recognize that there is a higher risk of compaction and irreversible soil structure degradation if work is performed during wet conditions. So we are recommending a condition that work be stopped during wet conditions to ensure that construction activities do not compromise the ability of the land to be used for agriculture or wildlife habitat in the future if the project area is decommissioned. So for those reasons, we recommend that the planning commission recommend conditional approval for docket SU nineteen zero zero one five, Excel Energy Community Solar Garden.
Thank you. What questions do we have for staff?
Hey, Rainey, this is Sam. Libby, I have a question about the access to the property. So as I understand, both this property and the generation plant property to the west are owned by Excel or PSCO. Is there an easement on the property to the west that retains access to this property if that were to change ownership?
If it was to change ownership, then an easement would be necessary. But I don't believe there are plans for that. And with continuous ownership between Sixty Third and the subject property, it's not an issue for legal access at the moment. They, they have demonstrated legal access.
Thanks.
This is Anne. I have a couple of questions. Were any alternate, alternate sites considered for this project?
I believe that would be better directed at the applicant or agent.
Okay. And the other question I had is, are there any other solar gardens this size in the county now?
Jack's Solar Garden is not quite this large, but it was approved. Jack's Solar Garden is not quite this large, but it was approved about a year ago. And there's another one, I believe it's still in process, but that's north, on kind of North Boulder, where 36 and J come together. There's another project site there, but I believe that's in process and not approved at this point.
Okay. I guess along those same lines, a question that I have is in regard to a project this size. Has there been any research done that looked at results as far as wildlife is concerned and what effect this might have on wildlife?
I am not sure about that. I wonder if Ron West, our natural resources planner, might be present and could address that?
This is Ron. Hi.
Hi.
That's a really good question. I think it's still an ongoing process of how these type of large facilities affect wildlife. A lot of it depends on what is done with the land underneath and around the panels. Sometimes they just put gravel down over the entire site. And obviously, that doesn't leave any wildlife habitat at all. Other times, they will mow what is there, which keeps it quite short and limits some species for using it. Other ones, they will let it grow as long as it doesn't get above the panels itself, particularly woody kind of plants. So that's a different set of circumstances. I asked in my referral memo what the actual management would be on the ground underneath the panels. And I don't believe I've heard that. Perhaps the applicant can address that here. We did eliminate the one fence, which I think is very beneficial for long-term wildlife use. And I do know that prairie dogs will come back into these type of facilities and still use the area underneath the panels. I hope that addresses some of the problem.
Yep. Ron, I have one other question along those same lines. And that is, as I understand it, there will be a motor on each one of these panels to move them during the day to follow the sun. And so my question would be, in addition to what's done as far as how the land itself is managed, is there anything that you're aware of in regard to the noise that would be generated by that and the effect it would have on wildlife?
I'm not an expert at that by any means. I think the applicant could address that. I'm guessing that these are very small electric motors and they move in very small increments throughout the day. I'm guessing they're largely silent, but perhaps not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron, this is Dan Hilton. I have a question for you while you're on. Have any of the Boulder County species of special concern been observed on this parcel? Or we're just, as a condition, recommending that a study be done to determine if any exist?
None that I know of. So it would just be the study, well, other than prairie dogs, they are on our list. Ospreys technically are no longer on the list, but I think we're addressing those well. It's a, it's not a great habitat as it stands right now. Spars vegetation, a lot of both noxious and common non-native species. The wetlands are probably the best area and those are to be avoided.
Burrowing owl is on the list, correct?
Yes. And Rainie, you could correct me, but I think they will do a survey before construction for burrowing owl, if you remember.
I do not, but I do remember that U.S. Fish and Wildlife submitted, they submitted documentation that they had no concerns about burrowing owl.
And then Ron, my question to you was going to be about that nesting pole that was moved and about the addition of a third nesting pole. Just wondering your thoughts on that. It sounds like you feel like that is an adequate response, but I'd like to hear a little more of your thoughts.
Yeah, ospreys are particularly adaptable to human uses. We have a nest site at the fairgrounds, which you're probably aware of. We have a camera on it. And it is, it used to be right on the fairgrounds or right on the edge of the parking lot. We moved it slightly to get it away a little bit. But they are, for raptor species, they're one of the more adaptable species. And I think if we add one nest site, the Valmont reservoirs are huge. I don't know what the home ranges of ospreys are, but I think that at least two pairs could be supported there. And either a third pair could be supported or it could be an alternate nesting site for them.
And the one that was moved, was that done with your recommendation? Or how did that, or is that just?
Rainie, I think, if you could correct me, I think OSMP just took it upon themselves to move that because this was pending?
That nest was actually moved by Excel. And I can pull up a map to show you the approximate location if that's of interest.
Yeah, I was just trying to see if that was done with Open Space and Mountain Parks or how, you know, if we feel like it's still a good location. Because I wouldn't really know.
I had that mixed up, that Excel is the one that moved it. And as long as it's along the shoreline or near the shoreline, it should be fine.
It is along the shoreline.
Thank you. Additional questions for staff?
This is Melanie Meskey. I just have one question for Rainie regarding the decision to move away from the increased setbacks. Could you speak a little bit more about what the current setbacks are for the property and what the proposed increased setbacks were that you decided to go against for more screening?
So the increased setback that Open Space and Mountain Parks requested was to relocate the arrays that are closest to their property and closest to the osprey nest platform on their property, another 100 meters to the south. And just due to the impacts of move, that shift to the applicant and that those costs would be then passed on to the users at the end, we decided that having them construct a third alternative nest location was a better solution than having them relocate the arrays away from that one nest site so that there would be an alternative location for the birds to nest, which was the concern of OSMP and why they requested that increased setback.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was for, sorry, this is Melanie again, if it was for the osprey or for the neighbors. And what is the current setbacks for the array?
The agricultural district, because this parcel does not front a road, all of the setbacks are 7 feet from boundaries.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff before we move on? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to invite the applicant's John Fitzpatrick, sorry, agent, and Jeff Stevens, who's an Excel rep, to present.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is John Fitzpatrick with Pivot Energy. I'm going to go ahead and pull up my presentation. Can someone confirm that you guys can see this?
We can see it.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. So on the line with me today is Jeff Stevens from Excel. He and I will be available to answer questions after this, but I'll be giving the presentation today. I'll try not to spend too much time on things that Rainie has already covered, but I wanted to give you a quick overview of what we're going to talk about here. Excel Energy will own this dedicated low-income community solar garden and it will provide cost savings to local low- and moderate-income electric customers in Boulder County and other nearby locations. Excel selected Pivot Energy as their development partner to complete the permitting and construction. But as we noted, Excel will be the system owner and operator for the life of the project. And they are using their land for this project, as we've noted. You can see here the location relative to some of the surrounding uses. I know that we've already talked about this. I did want to mention that we've had a biologist on site and we've cited the array to stay out of wetlands and floodplain areas. As noted, the project site is within the secure area of the Valmont facility located west of the irrigation canal on the property. Adjacent uses, as noted, were residential to the east, Boulder Open Space, and other Excel properties. This is a view from Legion Hill. I know we saw one earlier. I wanted to provide a before and after that gives you sweeping view from the west to the east. Above, of course, is the before. Below is a rendering of what the project will look like, showing the footprint there. This here is, again, the subject parcel, a couple of details. The solar arrays will sit on about 20 acres, but keeping in mind that the area of contact with the ground is very low and that there is open space in between the rows of solar modules. Speaking to the question earlier about ground cover, we will be reseating with a native low-growth grass mix. And so we will not be putting down any gravel or anything like that. We do want healthy native vegetation to be growing under the arrays, which we will manage in the event that it gets too tall. So we will come in there if it begins to interfere with the operation or the energy generation of the panels. The goal is for that to grow there and to get established and to keep the other invasive species at bay. As mentioned, the height's about seven and a half feet. These panels will be oriented in rows, as you see here, north and south, and they will follow the sun throughout the day. Construction is about a four-to-five-month period. And as noted, it's operational for between 20 and 40 years. This is a view of the same technology in action. You can see that the photo on the left shows the panels near midday. That center hub is about five and a half feet off the ground. The photo on the right shows the same panels at a different time during the day. And the top of the panel is about seven and a half feet above the ground. The motors that drive the panels actually drive a shaft that I don't know if you can see my mouse here, but there's a motor located and it accommodates several of the rows of solar modules and turns them with that small motor. It's about the size of a basketball. And it is very quiet. It's a small electric motor. It moves incrementally through the day. So as I noted, we did consult with the biologist to evaluate the status of the site for vegetation types, wetlands, and a review of the fauna that may be found there. We completed consultations with Fish and Wildlife for species of interest, and those were included in our application. We did reach out to the neighbors to the east and the south via certified mail more than three months before we submitted our application, seeking input from them on the project, but we did not receive any responses. I wanted to note that the project site does slope down to the west from the residential properties on the east and is at least 10 feet below the bases of the houses there located to the east of the project. I want to take a couple of minutes to talk about some of the concerns that were expressed. I know there was a late letter submitted earlier this week from some of the landowners to the east. And I do believe their questions are valid. And so I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk to them about those things. Excuse me, to talk to you about those things. A common concern is that property values of adjacent properties will be negatively impacted by the installation of solar projects. A couple of years ago, we worked with Cohen Resnick to do a study of property value impacts related to solar projects. We studied this in four states, including Colorado. You can see there at the bottom that the conclusion of the project study was that there is no measurable and consistent difference in property values for properties. And I'm sorry, there's a little window inside my screen. I can't finish that sentence. But there's no difference in property values for properties, I imagine it says, adjacent to solar farms, when compared to similar properties locationally removed from their influence. I provided this report into the record to Rainie yesterday, or it may have been today. But due to the late notice of the letter from the adjacent landowners, I'm sorry I wasn't able to submit that sooner. Another common concern is the noise of the equipment. And I want to point out that solar inverters do make noise. That's true. They have a decibel rating, similar to that of a residential air conditioner unit. In this case, these inverters will be no closer than 550 feet from the nearest home and they will be buffered by solar equipment. The equipment only operates during daytime hours. And during the quieter hours of the day, early in the morning, late in the afternoon, and overnight, of course, the inverters are off. Now, as a reference, many homes have air conditioning units that are immediately adjacent to them. And then this isn't considered to be a nuisance to homeowners with these units nor their neighbors, even in much more densely packed neighborhoods. There was that comment, we talked about the small electric motors that move the panels throughout the day. If you're standing next to one, you'll hear it, but it is very quiet. And I don't imagine that will be heard, you know, hundreds of feet away. This is a graphic just showing the location of the nearest inverters from the nearest home. There was a concern brought up about the glare from the solar panels, and I did want to touch on that. We do use the Forge Solar Glare Gauge Tool, which was developed by Sandia National Labs and has since been privatized. This is the go-to tool in the industry used to evaluate the potential for hazardous glare related to solar installations anytime an installation is completed on or near an airport. The tool is also capable of evaluating non-airport receptors. And we did run an analysis of all of the adjacent properties, specifically at the locations of the homes for this project. No glare was predicted for any of these properties. And that's because the solar array tracks during the day. So it's not bouncing light back across the panels to properties. It's typically being reflected up into the air. In addition to that, the modules do have an anti-reflective coating and simple glass to further reduce any potential from glare. Now, this is a pretty close-in screenshot, and I hope you guys can see this. All of the red pins were locations that we evaluated for the potential of glare. The two blue lines indicating 75th and Arapahoe were the roadways that we evaluated for potential glare. And at the bottom of the screen, you can see the summary of the results was that no glare was predicted. The model that Forge uses evaluates the location of the sun every minute of the day, every day of the year, and models out how the sun will interact with the panels at their location as they track throughout the day. Another concern that folks had was that the developer didn't reach out to people. And I just wanted to let you guys know, we did send certified mail to the four residences immediately east of the site and to the landowners southeast of the site, requesting that they call or email us so that we could meet to discuss any project concerns they have. All four landowners east of the site signed for their certified mail in August of 2019. This was confirmed by the USPS. And this was more than three months before Pivot submitted our land use application to Boulder County for review. This is just a screenshot of our certified mailing receipts. Additionally, we did reach out to Sydney and our team after an email that they sent in January to Boulder County staff. I did reach out to them again via email to follow up, requesting a phone call or a meeting. And unfortunately, I did not receive a response. So I want to pivot back to the project here and address some of the operations. As we noted, this will generate energy, clean renewable energy, and it'll be enough to power between six and eight hundred. and it'll be enough to power between 600 and 800 average residential homes, or equivalent. The project does not operate early in the morning, late in the evening, or during the night, and there's no glare impacts. There's no lights, and the project won't produce any odors. And after construction is complete, there will be no increase in traffic to area roads as a result of the project. We'll only visit the project four to eight times a year to complete maintenance and ensure that the vegetation is not interfering with the equipment. There are negligible impacts to the impervious area of the site because the array is supported by driven steel foundation posts that use the earth as their footing or their foundation. And while there will be some grading, there will not be major changes to existing drainage patterns on the site. I put in some basic greenhouse gas equivalencies here. You can pick any one of these things and think about it, but you know, the easy one here is how many average miles being driven during a year. Over 1,100 miles driven in a given year would be the equivalent greenhouse gas offset from this project. So in conclusion, Excel Energy has a great opportunity here to use their land for the greater good of Boulder County's low-to-moderate-income residents, reducing their energy costs and creating more social, environmental, and economic equity in Boulder County. The project strongly supports Boulder County's commitment to renewable energy generation of 100% by 2025. We will use local labor during construction and ongoing maintenance when possible, and the impact will be minimal and the disturbance very small to surrounding properties relative to other development options that could take place on a parcel like this. The project is a sign of Excel Energy and Boulder County's progress toward renewable energy. They've got a chance to use part of the old Valmont coal generating site as a home for clean, renewable, solar energy generating facility, helping Boulder County residents. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this presentation. Jeff Stevens and I are available to address questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have from commissioners?
This is Sam Fitch. A question about the proposal to put the solar array on the other side of the Valmont parcel. This would be across the street from the EcoCycles recycling site. And I guess what I would like to know is, have you studied the possibility of looking, of placing the site on the west side as opposed to the east side? And if so, what objections do you have, or would you have to doing that rather than the proposed site?
I'm going to let Jeff Stevens from Excel Energy answer that. We were brought into the project after the site selection was complete.
Yeah, hi, this is Jeffrey Stevens with Excel Energy. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess I'm assuming you're referring to the land directly west of the power station, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, still on Excel property. Yeah, so that was taken into consideration, although it wasn't quite big enough to basically contain the entire solar array in a means that would be economical. And so by that, I mean, we would have to basically spread it out so far that it would mean additional equipment, and with this being a, you know, a community solar garden, we're trying to keep costs as low as we can. In addition, that land is also, it's in the works for potential expansion of our transmission system in order to basically maintain the stability of our transmission network up there in Boulder. It's kind of already got a placeholder on it as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, hearing no other questions?
Leishen, sorry, I do have one. You cited, John, you cited a study where you looked at property values in regard to properties that were adjacent to or nearby solar arrays. And I'm wondering, were those projects, any of them, did they have their view compromised as a result of the array?
I mean, all of the adjacent properties studied had a very direct view of the solar arrays on the adjacent properties, yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
For the, I have a question about re-vegetation plans. You talked about grass, this is Leishen Gargano. You talked about planting native grass underneath, which is great. When it comes to the filling in, do you plan on planting already, like, larger trees? Or what does that look like?
So, Rainey, I may actually bounce that question to you because I think that was brought in after the fact as a condition of approval. I do remember reading through the concerns of the adjacent landowners, and there was a concern about finding a just-right solution, I'll call it, whereby we don't plant mature trees that are so tall that they impact the view of the neighbors and their impact of the flatirons and the Indian Peaks behind. So there may be some additional discussion to find a just-right solution on that, but Rainey, I know that that was a proposed condition that staff brought into the mix. Maybe you could comment on that?
Yeah, just doing the management plan, so that's still something that's to be done, but you're taking that into consideration. I think that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, with that, I am going to open the public comments section. We have six people who have signed up ahead of time, so I'm going to go through that list first. After those six people have spoken, if you are not on the list, I will give an opportunity for you to add yourself to the list. You can also type into the chat box on the right side of the screen, or if you don't have it open, you click the little button in the bar, and it should open it for you, and you can add your name there to be added to the list. Reminder that we do have a timer, and you'll get a 30-second warning when your time is almost up, and an alarm, so it'll be an auditory warning. With that, we will start with Carlos Real.
Hi, guys. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Carlos. This is my wife, Anna. We live on 2147 75th Street. We are one of the neighbors directly affected by this project. We live on the east side of the proposed site. And we sent out a document that had renders of what we would be looking at. And, you know, I'm thankfully an architect, and I can picture things very well, and I think that what the proposed site is, is going to affect us really, really bad. But I just want to go through nine points that are really quick. I had the visual impact of the property. It's, no one took the time to come over to this site. Maybe they contacted us via mail. I think they should have come, take pictures from what we experience every day, and they didn't. In that document that I sent, there are renders, and you can see how much of an impact, visual impact, we're going to have. They took the time to go to Legion Park, but not here, and so that's not cool. We invite all of you guys to come to our property and social distancing and all that, but to be able to see what we would be looking at. In regards to the noise, they mentioned, you know, it's an air conditioner unit, but they're not mentioning that there's going to be hundreds, or however many, 50, 60, air conditioners, you know, starting at the same time, in a very quiet place where lots of wildlife lives. So, you know, they're going to be making noise in the day and at night because they're going to have to come back to their original position. So that's number two. Health concerns. Has there been any studies, you know, of people living close to these things? You know, back in the day, you lived near the power lines, and all of a sudden, you know, 20 years later, you have cancer. So there's nothing addressed on that. Glare, okay, great. What if what motor breaks? And the panels are stuck in a position, and then the sun goes, and then we get the glare. I think that, you know, that's something that, you know, it's not being addressed. Property values. If you come and look at our property and look at the view that we have, the price will go down, the property value will go down if we have a massive, massive solar panel array in front of us. Wildlife. This might not be a migration corridor established by the state or the county, but we see geese, the same family of ospreys, deer, coyote, you know, snow owls, you know, just red hawks, eagles, just tons and tons of things that maybe the scientists and all that are not aware of because they don't live there. And so, you know, is this the end, or is this the end? Was that the end?
You can finish your last thought real quick.
Okay, yeah. The last thought is, why did the construction start? I mean, we have posts, we have drilling machines, we have the osprey. Why did it start already if this project hasn't been approved? That is, you know, and then, of course, you guys have mentioned it, why weren't other locations being proposed? These locations just seems to be wrong for Boulder County, and that's all we have to say. Thank you. Oh, one last thing, sorry.
Thank you.
We are absolutely in favor of solar energy and alternate, alternative energies. We've got, and our roofs, we've got them. We just don't think that this is the right place to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have Arteen Yapujian. Sorry if I said that wrong.
You did good.
That's okay. This is Sydney and Arteen Yapujian, and we live at 2079 North 75th Street, and we are the one that will be closest to the array. We have lived here for 35 years, and we know what lives behind us. We are against this project, and we agree with everything that Mr. Real has stated. The solar array will significantly impact us and the wildlife that live in this area. Our property value will definitely decline because of the effects it will have on our view. No one from Boulder County has come out to our property either to investigate what the impact of this solar array would be on us and the habitat that is here. Pivot's letter they sent to us simply stated their proposed project, but did not offer any invitation for us to respond with our concerns and questions, and I never saw an email from Mr. Fitzpatrick. We want to know why the view from Legion Park and the array of the array has been given so much emphasis and concern, and our view from our kitchen table is being minimized by both Pivot and the county. Why is Boulder willing to destroy the ecosystem here? Why aren't they using a different location? I understand that the heat from these arrays can harm birds and forces them to relocate. I also want to know if anybody has done a study about the migrating geese that come. Thousands and thousands of geese migrate through here. They fly over our roofs every single season, and they live in that reservoir. What's the effect on them? I'd like to reference my PDF presentation. I'd like to skip to page six. This is where these trees that they are, those trees don't exist. That little red box over to the right is where my house is. Page seven, this is the current view from my deck. This is why we live here and why we built here. You cannot tell me that this array is not going to affect this view. Those little red markings are the posts that have already been put out. This is a view just slightly to the north, northwest on page eight. Page nine, there's a red-tailed hawk. He's hunting. This is where we see eagles, we see hawks, owls, osprey, all the time. We see deer, we have coyotes, all kinds of wildlife. Page 10. That's going to be destroyed, and it will be destroyed. Nothing can hunt over these arrays, okay? This tree's going to be removed, and I want you to look at on page 10, that red shaded area with the purple outline. That's where those arrays are going to be. It's going to take up so much of our view. This is a view from our deck. I want to go skip down to page 12. That's what these arrays look like. Page 14, there's nothing living underneath those arrays. Page 15, I want you to look really closely at this. Boulder County Commissioners, this is what's happening here. There is already a rugby field that's going to be put just to the south of this location. Why is Boulder planning, doing this to this area? You are destroying all of this habitat. Look at page 16. We want you to put-
Go ahead and finish your, let's finish your last thought.
Move to the west side. Move to the west side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Megan Cranford.
Hi, I'm on the phone. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name's Megan, and I'm a young professional that lives, works, and plays in Boulder. And I wanted to speak in support of Excel's Community Solar Garden here in Boulder County. As a resident that is passionate about community sustainability, I've tuned in to the city of Boulder's lofty greenhouse gas reduction goals. And I believe it's important for Boulder County to support municipalities in achieving those goals by approving projects like the Community Solar Garden, especially in times of climate change urgency. And based on Boulder County's 2016 emission inventory, electricity makes up 41% of our emissions by source, and renewable energy implementation is one of the leading solutions to reducing those emissions. Additionally, I support clean, affordable energy for all residents of Boulder County, including low-income community members and people that rent or do not own their own homes. And this is an opportunity for people to accomplish their goals of reducing their impact on the environment while acknowledging personal financial constraints. Lastly, this Community Solar Garden is an opportunity to support local businesses, including the developers, engineers, and construction teams that will be putting the project together. So this is an opportunity for Boulder County to really invest locally in our people, our businesses, and towards our net-zero goals. And so I think now is the time to embrace that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, Sydney, you already spoke, but did, so then Arteen could speak this time? Or were you, did you?
Yes, I could speak.
Okay.
So like Sydney said, I've-
So go ahead and just repeat your name for us and address, please.
Okay, my name is Arteen Yapujian. Live at 2079 North 75th Street, and I have lived here for 35 years. We chose this location. We own that house on 10 acres, and we have the huge deck that overlooks the reservoir and the habitat area, and also the mountain- the, uh, the reservoir and, and habitat area and also the mountains behind it. It's magnificent. It's, uh, it's something that, uh, we, we wanted to do. And this is the reason we chose this location. And since I'm hearing that Excel has an alter, alternate location for this array. It only makes sense for them to go ahead and put an alternate location. What I heard was that there was going to be a, a more excess, uh, cost. But, but, but they're, they're shaving that cost at our cost. We, 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 we have, like Sydney said, we have witnessed all kinds of, uh, wildlife in here. We, we see deer on a daily basis. We, they, like she said about the, uh, geese migration. It's it just a pristine place for wildlife. And I think with these arrays in here, it's going to get destroyed. And, uh, and, and, and she is very much right. Our property value is absolutely will go down. Nobody wants to get on the deck and look at solar arrays. We believe in solar, uh, solar energy also. We actually have a off-grid house that only uses solar. So we, we believe in that, but not at the expense of these properties, uh, uh, that, that going to look at it day in and day out. And, and also the noise factor, uh, it's just really going to destroy the whole area. And, and the same thing with the, uh, with, with the Legion Park. A lot of tourists, a lot of people come to Legion Park. They, they park there and they, they watch the beautiful sunset. They watch the beautiful view and that's all going to get destroyed. Not only for us, also for, uh, for newcomers to Boulder and, and this is the beauty of this whole area. And it's just going to get destroyed. So please move it to the, since you had an alternate, alternative location. Please move it to the alternate location. I plead with you because this is just not right to punish us for, uh, for, for, uh, installing a huge array like this in front of our property day in and day out. So, uh, that's all we can do is plead with you guys and please understand. Use the alternate location, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke Alderton?
That's right, Alderton, yeah.
Alderton, sorry.
So, no, thank you. So I'm from, I'm Deputy Director of Energy Outreach Colorado. We're a nonprofit. That's been in operation for 30 years to try to help provide affordable energy to all Coloradans. And I just wanted to talk about the benefits to subscribers with this project. There are going to be 800 to 1,000, um, uh, income qualified Boulder County residents that'll be eligible to have their electricity bill cut, um, up to potentially 50%. And based on, on, uh, energy poverty data in Boulder County, that would equate to an additional $375 a year. These residents will have. And the many of the areas in Boulder County that we'll be targeting have up to 6% and higher energy burden in these areas, in the mountain regions, um, uh, north of Niwad areas that have very high energy burden in comparison to other parts of the county. And that, you know, that this project can kind of offer a long-term solution to energy affordability as electricity and other commodities start to increase over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Austin.
Hey, this is Ryan Austin with Excel. And I'm sorry, I meant to, um, be available for questions if something came up because I'm with, I'm working with this on this project. So I didn't actually mean to speak right now. So apologies for my confusion.
Okay. Well, we'll know you're here and, um, when we come back to applicant questions, we'll, um, make sure to talk to you.
Sounds good. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Then we had, yeah. Carson Byerhoff.
Are you able to hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Okay. So this is actually kind of building off of Luke Alderton's question. Um, and it's great to see that there were some actual like calculations, but.
Go ahead and just restate your name and address first real quick, please.
Sure. I'm Carson Byerhoff and I'm a student with Dale Case, actually, uh, at CU Boulder.
And what's your address?
2232 Almyra Street, Aurora, Colorado.
You keep talking now.
Okay. But I was just wondering if there'd be any way to propose that before anything got, um, agreed upon, that there would be some of these numbers kind of put into the agreement saying like the $375 in savings per year. And then how, uh, with the local labor that's used? What sort of wages or insurances would be given to those wage workers or construction, for construction and maintenance? And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our list of people who signed up in advance. Are there people who have not signed up but would like to speak? If so, you can, um, put your name in the chat or unmute yourself and let us know.
This is Carlos Real again. Um, do I have one more thing to say?
Actually, we can't let you go twice. It's only, we have a limit per person. Yes, if she, yeah, is she in the room? Can you?
She just left.
Yeah, I see her coming. If she, she can come and she can have three minutes, just have her restate her name and address.
Hi, my name is Anna Sanchez and I live in 2147 75th Street. Uh, I just wanted to add to this that, uh, we spoke to the neighbors, uh, that are to the north and, uh, and to the other side. And they, they all agree that this is going to affect everything. I mean, the, the, the proper, the, the property value is just going to go down. There's no question about it. And and he couldn't be here because he's a military guy and he was called for duty, I guess, or something, but, uh, he couldn't be here. So, we spoke to everybody, of, of course, and everybody is against this. I mean, if, if it would be the, the, the property of any of the developers, they wouldn't do it in front of their houses, I'm sure. So I think they're adding value and subtracting value to us. So I don't think this is correct. We are all about alternative energy, but I mean, they have so many other places to do it. Come on. I mean, why put it in, in your backyard? It just, it's not fair. It's not right. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, hearing none. Um, I will close public comments. And we can bring it back for additional questions to the applicant and staff. I would like to ask the, um, Excel Energy just about more of those other locations and places that you looked, um, for more detail on what that looked like.
Sure. So this is Jeff Stever again. As I mentioned before, uh, the, the additional site we looked at immediately adjacent to the west of the existing power station. There's actually transmission lines and railways in that area as well. And so having to reroute the transmission lines and the, uh, remove the existing railways would just not make it economical essentially for the outcome of what we're trying to achieve here. And in addition, it's also not big enough for the sites. Um, it's just not enough surface area. So, I mean, we, we really tried to look at all the options and we did look. You know, we've got other areas as well, obviously in Boulder, but in order to make it economical and, you know, kind of take the first step forward in Excel and making our, you know, renewable push here. We really wanted to keep it on the Valmont site so that we could benefit the customers in the Boulder area.
Thank you. Commissioners, what other, um, additional questions do you have for applicant and staff based on public comment?
Yeah, this is Sam. We'll be adding a question for staff. A couple of the members of public asked about why pictures and review weren't taken from their properties. And I think my understanding is that's standard practice would not be to go on private property for that purpose. I wonder if you could just comment about whether that was a decision or a standard approach from staff.
Yes, it is standard. We don't typically take pictures from private properties. Just the subject property and public spaces like roads and public open space.
Thank you.
And this is Ann. I have a question. Um, is there a reason you don't do that? You said typically you don't take pictures from private property, but when you have a situation such as this where you have properties that are impacted by, um, by something like this, I would think it would be, I would find it helpful to have those pictures.
So we don't typically do it because we usually don't have permission to go on the private properties. Um, and we don't make a practice of reaching out to private properties and being like, hey, can we take a picture from your property of this project? That being said, I do remember one of the public comments did have an offer in there for us to go to their backyard and take pictures from their backyard. And we didn't. But, um, if that is something that the planning commission feels is necessary to move forward on this, staff can do more review and approach those property owners to work with them and take pictures from their sites.
Another, another question I have is, um, as far as the alternate sites. I know in the past, and I'm thinking particularly of the project that was up at Gross Reservoir. We actually, I think they had, was that the Denver Water?
Yes.
Was that that one? Yeah. And, and so I remember there was an issue about having them look at alternate sites. And we actually held that over to get them to get the information from the alternate sites. But I think they had done at least one alternate site review in their presentation. And I guess I'm wondering here why there wasn't more, why that wasn't looked at here, having, having more information about alternative sites. Given, given, given the, uh, given the, um, impact it's, this has on the neighbors to the east.
Denver Water, that was a telecommunications tower. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of.
Alternative site analysis is required for telecommunications towers specifically by the code. It is not required for solar facilities. Um, and that's why we didn't ask for more information about it.
Okay. Thank you.
That site was also, because it was a tower, visible from many more public spaces, including the various public roads and open space trails.
I have a question on, um, the recommendation. Did, did staff not see any need to, uh, do any further study or put any conditions related to, uh, species that may exist on the site? Are, are we just, um, sort of assuming that there's? How, how are we dealing or dealing with species of special concern like the, um, pebble jumping mouse and burrowing owls and things like that? Are we just assuming that they're not there or, or is there some reason that we don't have language in the recommendation to deal with, um, uh, deeper study?
So in the application materials, um, there was an environmental study included. And also responses from U S Fish and Wildlife that, um, said that they had no concerns about some of those critical species. Uh, and that is just based off of the conclusions of those studies and, and the response, response from the U S Fish and Wildlife. And with, um, response from Ron West, our, uh, natural resources planner, seemed like we could move forward with what we had.
Okay. So, so no additional study is needed in staff size? Thanks.
Additional questions do we have? Are we ready for discussion?
This is Mark Bloomfield. I do have a question for the applicant. The, the point of noise, um, I think is, is an interesting one. You know, if it is, if it is the equivalent of a, uh, of an air conditioner. I understand that it's 550 feet away, but one of the public comments was, you know, point taken that it's not just one air conditioner. And I'm, so I'm wondering how many, uh, inverters there are. And if there's any study that has been done on the noise impacts to the neighbors.
Yeah, I'm going to do a real quick calculation here. We anticipate approximately 50, five zero inverters scattered throughout the site. The architecture is distributed. The, the decibel levels, of course, are not additive. A, a 60 decibel inverter operating adjacent to a 60 decibel inverter does not yield 120 decibels. Will the volume level from two or three inverters near one another be louder than one? Yes. But at this point, projects like this have been installed, uh, all over the place, to be honest. Boulder County's land use code until very recently was very restrictive. Otherwise, I would anticipate far more of these projects in the county. Of, of course, there are projects, uh, you know, surrounding you guys in, in several other counties. But people have been living comfortably near solar arrays like this now for many, many years. And anytime you move something like a solar inverter, or even a group of solar inverters to football fields away from a receptor, and you put geographic baffles in between the receptor and the source of the noise, such as the solar equipment. You don't have a, a channel or a tunnel for noise to be funneled to a specific receptor. So I would never say that the inverters operate silently. That's not true. But I would say that after more than a decade in this industry, we don't get noise complaints. They just don't happen.
This is Melanie Meskey. I have, uh, another question for you, John. There was a public comment about, uh, potential health concerns, uh, with your experience in the industry. Is, is this something that's come up in the past? Do you have any, uh, background information on that?
Sure. There's been ample studies conducted about the health and safety of photovoltaic solar panels. You can do a quick Google search and find them. I could also provide staff with a report from the University of North Carolina's Clean Energy Center. Many people don't know this, but the state of North Carolina is top three nationally in terms of the amount of solar panels installed. And North Carolina State University has a very well-considered and thorough report on the health and safety impacts of solar panels. Unequivocally, there are not health and safety concerns associated with solar panels. People live with them on their roofs and have for decades.
That was going to be my next question. Again, Melanie. That was gonna be my next question. Again, Melanie, is it any different from what people have on their roofs, essentially from mechanically or anything like that?
The equipment is, in terms of the energy generating equipment, everything is the same. The panels are the same. The inverters do the same thing. You know, they're larger. I mean, instead of being the size of, you know, a backpack, now they're the size of like the kind of refrigerator you would find in a college residence hall. But otherwise, it's doing the same thing. It's taking direct current electricity generated by the solar panels, inverting it in the inverter, and making that energy suitable for injection into the electric grid as alternating current energy. So, it's the same thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Todd Quigley. A question on the study for potential impact to property value. Two questions related to it. One, was it an independent study, or was it paid for by the applicant?
We participated in the study. It was completed by Cohen Resnick, who's an internationally renowned law firm. So, you can certainly review the study. It's been made part of the public record and shared with staff. Their methodology is discussed in full detail, as well as the subject sites that were reviewed. So, yes, we were part of that study, but it was a larger study that was conducted over several sites in multiple states.
Okay. And then the second part was, was any specifics to Boulder County? It sounds like it was kind of a general, you know, across the region study, but not specific to the county or things like that.
Yeah, the closest one was Jeffco, north of our Vada, in an area that is not entirely dissimilar from this, larger acreages for the homes. It was in a field. It happened to be next to a subdivision, so there were more homes, but similarly sized homes that looked out into a large field and also had views of the mountains. So, you know, no two sites are the same. But when you look at enough sites and enough locations, you begin to develop trends, and that was the purpose of the study. We incorporated sites, or I should say, we asked them to incorporate sites in Colorado that were representative of what we were seeing for projects of this nature. And so, we've used this study to reference similar sites in the past, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Melanie, do you have a question?
I just had one more thought of asking either John or Excel. We had one public comment asking about the specifics of the wages and local labor. I don't know if that's anything we could actually put into an agreement, but maybe if we could get more information on the background of how it will impact the Boulder County itself and how they will be providing the labor for it. Maybe you could just speak a little bit more towards that. John?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, we work with a Colorado-based general contractor who provides installation services for projects just like this one. They're based in Durango. They don't bring a crew of folks from Durango to build a project like this. They source labor locally. Now, as I noted in my presentation, the installation only takes about four to five months. And so, after four or five months, it's most likely that those laborers who may live in Boulder County will stay in Boulder County and seek other work. Ongoing maintenance, depending on how Excel chooses to move forward with this, could be sourced to a local landscape firm. They may elect to do that with internal resources, I'm not sure. But for this project, the biggest local input and the thing that we need to really keep our eyes on is the benefit to the low to moderate income subscribers who will see savings on their energy bills for the next 20 to 40 years as a result of this project.
What other questions do we have before we move to discussion? Okay, let's discuss among commissioners.
So, this is Sam Fitch. I hear a lot about property values and concern about property values, as well as visual impacts. And I guess my point is that maintaining or increasing property values or decreasing property values is not a specific goal of the Boulder Valley Com Plan. It's not really included as something that's a criteria within our land use code. There are other goals that we seek to serve. I think renewable energy clearly is included in that. Assistance to low-income families, environmental justice is clearly part of the com plan. Resilience is part of the com plan. But the county does things that either increase in some cases or decrease in other cases people's property values. Things that your neighbors do to improve your, their lots may improve your, really, your property values, things the federal government does, changes your property values. But there's nothing in property rights or in property rights law that says basically government can't do things that affect frequently increasing your property values. And the same is really true for views. We all value our views in Boulder County, but the fact that the neighbor just west of us has trees that are growing up and preventing me from seeing the flatirons, I could try to get a view easement as a private agreement between me and the neighbor, but if he doesn't want to do it, or she doesn't want to do it, I have no property rights to an existing view. We do value view corridors from public spaces, but there's nothing in our land use policies that say that we guarantee to any property owner that the view doesn't change. So, I think here we have to say, I should have said at the very beginning, although we're sheltering in place, we also go out on the hike when we can. And in returning from one of those hikes, we actually drove up to Legion Park, that I'd never been there before. And I have to say, I agree with staff that this is a neighborhood that has very diverse uses. Because so, the view at the neighborhood neighbors, Mr. Real and his other neighbor that are closest to the proposed site, part of that view isn't just the mountains, it's the Valmont Power Plant, which was there before probably any of those houses were there. It's got two industrial park areas, one of which is very obvious if you're standing at the edge of Legion Park. So, this is not a pristine site. I hope it gets redeveloped into something more environmentally useful than the power plant. But I do think, again, we have to consider what are the larger public goods that will come out of this project? And against them, those public goods, it seems to me, there are three people who think they will be, or three families that think they will be desperately impacted. And I think the evidence so far doesn't really suggest that that's the case.
This is Mark. I would agree with that, Sam. I think that was very, very well stated. Thank you for that. I would also add that NREL on their website does have a couple of myths of large-scale solar. One of them is the property values question. They also mentioned that noise typically outside of a quote-unquote "facility fence." It's not really above ambient noise. And also glare, they say that glare is typically not an issue. So, yeah, that's my comments.
This is Dan Hilton. I do think there are some pretty significant impacts from this proposal. It's quite large. It's quite dense in terms of how it sits on the parcel. I would have really liked to have seen more detailed information about alternative sites and maybe different configurations on this particular parcel. I don't feel like I have very good information about the view shed from the property owners to the east, and that I would like to see a deeper analysis of what the, what the different possibilities are for having vegetation screen the project. I agree with Sam that there is a lot of, you know, heavy industry and different types of uses around the area, but there also is a lot of significant sort of environmental, different environmental communities nearby, including the reservoir itself. I know harbors a lot of different bird species, and I think that this would have a decent impact on environmental communities around that reservoir. So, I don't think we should minimize those by saying that, you know, it's, there's a lot of heavy industry in the area that those two things can exist at the same time. So, for a project of this impact, and in this particular location, I really would want to have seen more information about alternative configurations, screening, and potentially different sites, and details about why they were not ideal.
So, Sam Fitch again. I guess my response would be that I think, I do think that for waterfowl and for birds' ospreys, bald eagles probably be in that area as well. But there's just, there's been no evidence that suggests that the reservoir itself or the wildlife that's in the reservoir is really going to be impacted. And so, if you want that to be studied as part of a condition, that's fine with me. But I really think that's, particularly if you, if you look at the site, this is very adjacent to the reservoir, that both reservoirs are way bigger. And this is, again, shoreline, but it's not really a major part of the whole ecosystem with the geese, et cetera. They're gonna be there regardless.
Yeah, this is Mark. I would also ask the question of like, why are we even asking about alternative sites? We didn't ask for alternative sites with Jack Solar Garden. You know, there are other solar gardens that we don't, we don't ask that question because the applicant has a piece of property and they want to put solar garden on it. It's a question of, do they meet the requirements for that property or not? And I think that, you know, with conditions, we're finding that they, that this applicant is.
Yeah, this is Todd. And I kind of agree with your statements there, right? It's from the application standpoint, you know, this is the site that they're proposing. I think they're looking at it from a financial sense. This is what makes sense to have the project work, and that's kind of their, their decision to come forward with location. Location-wise, right, I think overall, and from accounting perspective of, it's, yeah, it's probably a good location. It's gonna impact the nearby neighbors, right, from a visual standpoint. It's been brought up. I don't want to just gloss over that because, yeah, it'll change their view. However, it's hard where that you could do this type of, do this type of thing without impacting a neighbor's view. And that's, that's kind of unfortunate. But to have these things that benefit the county, we kind of, as a group, need to look at sites and where they're being proposed and making sure it kind of makes sense within the comprehensive plan. And that's kind of what I feel like our, our job is here today, is to look at it that way. And from that standpoint, then I'm kind of comfortable with moving forward because we're not going and trying to put this in an area that is a wildlife corridor, that's been designated that way, or in the area that it's kind of going against the grain of the rest of the county. So, kind of my thoughts on.
This is Leishan Gargano. You know, some of the other solar garden stuff that we've looked at, and the fact that we have seen them revegetate well, we have seen, you know, it still allow movement of some of the wildlife. And it sounds like the wildlife that's there, the county is not as concerned about. So, that does make me feel good about it. I think being next to the power plant and in the area is, you know, I wonder what would those other locations really, really look like if there were alternatives? You know, and to Mark's point, this is the property they, they own, and it is private property. And so, yeah, and we haven't asked for those alternate locations in other cases. So, I agree with that.
This is Ann. I was glad to get the information about why it was that the alternate location research that was done at Gross Reservoir was required by regulation, statute, whatever. So, that's, that's good information to have. And as far as alternate sites, you know, I understand this is private property, and they've decided that this is what they want to do, and this is where they want to do it. The only thing I would ask is that they would work with the neighbors as much as possible to do more in regard to trying to minimize the impact to the neighbor's view of that array, because it is so large. And I have to say that, I understand, Sam, that that's not part of our, the comprehensive plan. But on the other hand, I think that if there's something that can be done, I would like to see that done. I think too often, we say, well, this is, this is what the com plan says, and, you know, neighbors be damned. But I would like to see them work with the neighbors as much as they can in regard to the view.
This is Leishan. So, do you think that would be as part of the creation of the revegetation plan and the screening plan?
Yeah, it's, the revegetation, the way I see that is, that's more right around the, the array. And the screening, I think, is something that I would like to see more done, you know, sticking in a few trees there. And I understand that there's the balance between putting in trees that are too big, that they block the view of the mountains, or too small, that they don't do enough to shield the view from the array. But I guess I would like to see more cooperation between the, between Excel and the neighbors to try and come up with a plan that's as satisfactory as possible to both parties.
So, this is Sam Fitch, and I agree with that. If you want to make that a condition or... toughen the language in the proposed conditions of approval, I'd be happy to support that. I think it is a question of trying to get enough particular mature trees, but not something that's actually going to interfere more just by blocking out the solar array part.
This is Anne again. Yeah. I agree with that, Sam. I think that that's why I phrased it in a way, the working with the, with the neighbors to come up with something that's satisfactory to both parties or as satisfactory as it can be.
Yeah, this is Leishen. I'm with you. My thought is who better to help determine what that line is than the people whose view it is?
Yeah, exactly.
So this is Mark. Definitely in support of that. I'm just looking at condition number 10, which talks about the screening plan. And item C does say additional tree shall be planted west of the properties identified as on 75th Street. Tree locations must be noted in the plan. Item D is tree shall be placed and spaced in a manner that maximizes screening with the goal of breaking up the view rather than completely obscuring it. So Anne, would your proposal be to modify those in some way to kind of indicate, you know, work with the neighbors to to, you know, achieve their goals in terms of the view?
This is Anne. Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to see some language in there that would indicate that the applicant would be working with the neighbors on that, on those particular items. C and D.
So do we have additional discussion?
This is Melanie Neskey. I just wanted to, to make a comment. I think that that compromise is a really good idea. I really appreciate Ron from Natural Resources jumping on and answering some of our questions as far as the the environmental and habitat concerns of the area and what, what the other commissioners have echoed of, you know, the, the balance between serving, serving the community and the low income groups that will benefit from this and balancing that with the view shed. If we could get some compromise as far as the screening and the vegetation, I think that that would be, that would be agreeable for me to have those two, two issues kind of work out.
Do we have a proposed motion?
This is Mark. I can take a stab at it. And, and I'm, I'm happy to have a friendly amendment if I don't capture exactly what you want. I move that planning commission recommend that the board of county commissioners conditionally approve docket SU dash one nine dash zero zero one five Excel energy solar community garden with the conditions, the 17 conditions found in our packet with modification to condition 10 items C and D to suggest that or to require that Excel work with the residents and the noted properties to have a screening plan that that, you know, best meets their their desires as far as screening the.
Sam Fitch, I'll second Mark's motion.
Any additional discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call. Anne Goldfarb?
Yay.
Dan?
Yay.
Melanie?
Yay.
Leishen? Yay. Mark?
Yay.
Sam Fitch?
Yes.
Sam Libby?
Yay.
Todd?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next docket item. Docket, oh, should we take a break?
Yes, please, because I have a battery about to die.
Okay, is 10 minutes an okay time?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so back at 5:32. And we'll have the remaining docket items at that time.
Thanks.
All right, can you all hear me? Or am I frozen?
I can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay, my screen is just looks a little frozen, so I was worried.
I can hear you, but I can't see.
Okay. Maybe I am kind of frozen. No, no, I turned that off on purpose while I was on break. Should be better now.
Yes.
All right, should I do another roll call just to see that everybody made it back?
Good night. This is Rick Hackett staff. It's a good idea.
Okay. All right, Anne.
I'm here.
Dan?
Here.
Melanie?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Sam Fitch? Todd? I maybe heard Todd. Oh, are the Sams back?
Yes, I'm here.
I see Sam Fitch.
Yep, I'm here.
All right. Then let's start our next docket item, docket LE dash two zero dash zero 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 one, new left-hand fire protection district station one.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Gambra. I'm the planner on this docket. Are you all seeing my presentation?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. So this is the left-hand fire protection district, new station number one, docket LE twenty dash zero 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 one. Well, I, my show is, okay, here we go. So this is a location extent review for removal of three existing structures and construction of a new 14,725 square foot fire station on an approximately two acre parcel located at 900 Left Hand Canyon Drive. It's in the agricultural zone and it's owned by the left-hand fire protection district. So here we are, just up Left Hand Drive, just past the Heil Valley Ranch open space. Here's a little closer zoom in of the property. You can see this is the Gear Canyon Drive, which goes up to Heil Valley. In terms of the comprehensive plan map, there are several different resources in this property. However, the entire area had been previously built out with the existing fire station. Also, the previous house lot dwelling unit, et cetera, were over at the eastern end. That's all been removed at this point. Point being that the property pretty much had been fully developed and encumbered with human activity for, you know, number of decades. In terms of open space, you can see the Heil Valley Ranch basically surrounds the property. There's also some conservation easement property kind of kitty corner to the south. And here's a look at the aerial photo. Again, this shows the existing fire station down here. Previously, there was a property line in this area. That property has now been sold to the fire district. They own this entire parcel. And this building here that's shown in the aerial photo has, has since been removed. So that's been taken away. So this whole area is currently undeveloped. Just some quick photos of the fire station as it exists right now. The office area is being operated out of this trailer. They've got some storage containers to store their equipment and then the fire garage actually over here housing their vehicles. Here's just another look at the current garage four bays on the structure. Immediately adjacent to the site is this Altona Schoolhouse, which was recently revitalized, what do I say, restored by Parks and Open Space. There are some concerns related to this schoolhouse being in such close proximity and we'll talk about those as we get through the review. And then just a zoom in of the current site. Here's the trailer and the storage units, the existing garage and then kind of just a gravel parking area in this zone. Again, this structure has been removed and this area is currently has no structures. So for the site plan, here's how things are proposed to look. The new station will be over now toward the easterly end of the site. And then they'll have a little more formalized parking area, considerably more parking to accommodate for things like events and trainings that they'll hold on site. Actually, three different access points, one being the, the large apron for the emergency vehicles, but then two separate entrances for the parking area. Another thing to notice at the back is the lake ditch. That does run along the property line of the property and there are some specific requirements or restrictions on different landscaping and things that can happen in this zone. So just something to note. You can also see, here's the property line for the Altona Schoolhouse, which is over in this area. They are pretty close to that. In discussions with them more recently, this garage may slide back just a few more feet, which will give a little more room here, but either way, very close to that property line, which again, we'll talk about when we talk about the schoolhouse. Terms of the floor plan, you can see roughly half the structure is going to be the vehicle garage and some storage areas related to that. They do have a large community space with some public restrooms and things associated over on this end of the facility. And the center portion is really for, you know, the, the fire personnel themselves, some dorm areas, bathrooms, showers, locker rooms kind of thing, and then some living space. All things that, you know, I think we would expect to see for a modern fire station that's, you know, expected to last 50 or more years and accompany some potential organizational growth. So building elevations, this top one is what will face Left Hand Canyon Drive. You can see the three large vehicle bays here on the side. And then the main, you know, human personnel entrance will be over on this left-hand side toward the parking. They've done some things to break up the mass, such as, you know, these different roof lines, et cetera. And there's different materials on the, the structure, you know, corner braces, things like that, just to give a little more visual interest, which I think will be important when we talk about visual concerns. This is the side, basically ends up facing into a hillside. This does face toward the Heil Valley Ranch. There are no trails in the immediate vicinity. So, and again, it slopes upward from here. I don't anticipate any major view issues with this. This is the side that will present to the schoolhouse. Again, it is their vehicle bays. Not a whole lot that can be done with this area. But that's what that will look like. And then this is the side that will face up canyon that you'll see as you, you come down the canyon, down toward Boulder. Terms of landscaping, they do have quite a bit of landscaping proposed around their new parking areas along the front of the building. They are a little limited in this area and what they can do because of things like wildfire mitigation and also just proximity to that parcel line. Some landscaping proposed for the back. Again, the Lake Ditch company doesn't allow them to, there's an easement in this area. Doesn't allow them to do a whole lot of landscaping in this area, but they are putting in some features, which I think will be important to minimize, you know, visual impacts to the county open space. So in terms of where this will lie in comparison to the existing station, this is an estimate that I did using GIS. This is not, you know, hasn't been measured and marked out. Though I think this is probably pretty close. Can see here's the new property line. They're going to be very close to that. They need to build the station in this area so that their current station can stay operational throughout construction. And, you know, they need this garage for their, their vehicles, particularly through the winter if that should happen. If this isn't complete by winter, because the trucks will freeze up otherwise. So they do need to keep this in operation while they're doing construction. Again, the structure is gone and this is that historic schoolhouse. It's about 130 to 140 feet of separation between the two structures. So that's good. However, this is a very large structure that presents, you know, something of a blank wall at that schoolhouse. So just in terms of renderings, this is what the station is expected to look like when complete. Just a couple of different views here. We referred out to the usual agencies and the kind of critical pieces we, we heard back. Our engineering review team had some concerns or just noted some conditions about, you know, access permits, stormwater quality permits that may be required, easements for any improvements off property. Generally kind of standard things, you know, certainly specific to this project, but conditions that are not, you know, none of these are like deal breakers. So this is all all included in the staff recommendation for approval, conditions of approval and as well as in your packets. The other big concern we heard was from Parks and Open Space. We didn't hear many concerns or really any concerns about impacts to the, the open space in terms of the recreational trails. But of course, they were concerned about the impacts to the Altona Schoolhouse. They do programming there with elementary school students and part of the idea is to kind of take students back in time to experience a one-room schoolhouse, you know, back at the turn of the century. So we do want to take those concerns very seriously and, and do what we can do to limit those. Other than that, wildfire mitigation required, you know, public health permits, et cetera. We also heard from one adjacent property owner who I believe is attending the meeting. And they were concerned about noise, visual impacts of this large new station and turnaround traffic in their driveway, I think particularly when there's events and trainings. We also heard from another property owner this morning. They're, they really just asked a series of questions. When I responded to those, they generally seemed satisfied with the answers. So they didn't specifically note any objection. So just wanted to raise that and I think that was forwarded on this morning to, to you all. In terms of review, this being a location and extent review, all we look at with this is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And so we just looked at a few elements of the comprehensive plan, the ones that seemed relevant. So in terms of open space, this is adjacent to the Heil Valley Ranch. However, there's no concerns from Parks and Open Space staff about impacts to the recreational trails and things like that. The fire station and the residential parcel, which, you know, all of that has been removed, have been in that location for many years. So it's not, these won't be new impacts to the area. Things like the structures and, you know, sirens, et cetera, have been, you know, felt at this property for many years. In terms of the transportation element, the project area, sorry, yeah, the project area and the property will be accessed from county maintained roads and shouldn't impact the right of way, shouldn't be any major traffic increases. Stormwater may be a concern and that's going to be, you know, taken care of at permitting. We do have a requirement that, you know, the stormwater calculations go through a kind of rigorous review before that permit is granted. Terms of cultural resources, the Altona School is adjacent to the east of the property. And we're suggesting a condition of approval after discussions with both the fire district and Parks and Open Space that essentially they work together to create that plan. that essentially they work together to create that plan. We're not going to recommend a specific plan at this point. Parks and Open Space wasn't ready to commit to anything at this point. And Left Hand Fire District is receptive to that idea. So we're going to let those two parties come to a mutually agreeable plan. And that's going to be a condition of approval for this. In terms of natural resources, we had no concerns noted from our natural resources planner. And again, this property, all of it, had been previously developed. And really, the footprint is relatively small and compact, considering the size of the station and the amount of parking. They've really put together a very condensed plan on their property for what they're proposing, so. And then in terms of goals, both of these goals just have to do with, you know, public safety and working with fire districts to help increase their services. So we think that this aligns very well with that. So therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission conditionally approve this docket. Docket LE-20-0001, Left Hand Fire Protection District Station 1, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and shown here on this slide. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have? All right, hearing none. Oh, I'm echoing a little bit. Can you go unmute? I will ask the applicant to speak. Is it Russell Lettingham?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Russell Lettingham, Fire Chief for Left Hand Fire. Speaking on behalf of our district, we'd like to appreciate your time you've taken today to hear this as we move from the 19th century to the 21st century, hopefully very quickly. Our station currently of the bays is 1970s vintage with our trailer 1950s. So this will be a big step in us moving forward to provide the safety and our fire service for Northern Boulder and our surrounding communities. One of the things we've looked at doing is sliding the bays back nine feet, which may help out a little bit on the schoolhouse and then with the neighbors across the street. Along with that, we're also, a big piece of this is the community room and the dorms. As a volunteer fire department, most of our volunteers no longer live in districts. So this will allow some of them to be housed overnight when they choose to do duty shifts, which can also help eliminate traffic because they'll check in at six or seven at night and will remain there until in the morning. So they won't be coming in and running calls and having run to the station at midnight. So once again, we appreciate your time. And if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
Do I hear someone thinking about it? All right, then I'm going to open for public comment. We have two people signed up. Again, if you're not on the sign-up sheet already, that's okay. You can sign up in the chat on the right side of the screen. Or after the first two go, we'll give you an opportunity to unmute. Reminder to just restate your name and address when you come on. And we'll start with Richard Windhausen.
That's correct. Yeah.
Great.
Hello, commissioners, thank you. I would like to register my objection to the reversed orientation.
Name and address first.
Oh, sorry. Rick Windhausen, 845 Left Hand Canyon Drive. Like I said, I would like to register my objection to the reversed orientation of the station complex. If you were noticing on Sean's pictures, it's my property, my house, that is directly across the street now from this significantly expanded structure. Today, the garage is up canyon from my residence with the nearest corner offset from the closest corner of my house. And the garage doors are actually slightly angled away. With the new orientation, as you saw, the garage moves roughly 100 feet closer. And now the station garage doors are directly opposite my residence. And the doors are now aimed at my master bedroom, my second bedroom, and our living room. So clearly, station activities will obviously be much louder and intrusive. This, of course, has impact during daylight hours, but I think as folks know, there's a lot of activity at the station at night, either when there's a fire event or more often when people are called into service for road accidents or other situations. And so the noise and lighting will be highly impactful, especially given where this is located with, you know, with respect to my house. This reorientation isn't really unavoidable, in my opinion. Again, if the concern is to provide protection for the trucks while the new garage is being built, there are other ways to do that. There's a parking lot adjacent to the existing garage, as you saw. A temporary shed or garage could be built there while they're redoing the structure. Or, you know, the new site could be used for such a temporary spot. And you wouldn't have to reverse the orientation of the structure to do that. And, you know, that adjacent lot has been used for staging for a number of other activities over time. So, you know, I think there are ways that you can retain the present orientation, and the station could still be fully in service during the construction. I think it should be fairly obvious to you that this new orientation has a very negative impact on our property. And I think it's going to be a permanent and ongoing source of disruption and disturbance. Sean already pointed out the issues with the schoolhouse. I was actually going to lobby on the county's behalf on, you know, the impact on the schoolhouse. Even with, even with some protective vegetation, you're going to have a very large garage next to what's meant to be a quaint experience. If nothing else can be done, I would request that the garage be screened for my property with large trees, evergreens, ideally on my property, but maybe across the street. That sirens and noise be abated, and that special attention be given to deflecting the lighting. And also that a notice be placed to screen drivers from using my driveway or from parking on Left Hand Canyon Drive along my property, which is something that happens quite a bit when the fire station is in operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Gordon.
I actually signed up by accident, sorry about that. I'm with the architecture firm for Left Hand.
Ah, no worries.
Sorry about that.
Like to speak?
Hi, Leishen.
Yeah.
This is Anna. I believe you cut out when asking for additional public comment.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? From the public? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comments and open it back up for the commissioners to ask additional questions of the applicant and staff.
This is Mark. I'm wondering if the applicant can speak to what we just heard from the neighbor about the location of the garage and whatnot.
This is Rob Davis. I can speak regarding some of the physical constraints on how the building got located where it is. I'm principal of Studio DH Architecture and the principal designer of the structure. Would that be okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. On Sean's aerial that you see there, the very northeast corner of the proposed structure, the one that's closest to the existing trailer that they work out of, on our proposed site plan, that is pushed as far west as we can because there, what we didn't discuss till now is there's the lake ditch, ditch easement, and there's a gap. And then immediately to the south of that is a Pooter Valley REA Electrical Utility easement. And it's, I believe, 20 feet wide. And just adjacent to the corner of the building, the northeast corner there, you can see a little shadow, and that's a power pole. So we've located that, yeah, that's the power pole that Sean's pointing to. And the easement offsets to the south of that. So that station's been pushed as far west as it can, you know, given the internal components that meet the station's requirements to function. We looked at flipping the station, but as you can see, the bay, the bay area where the trucks are is deeper than the admin office area, which exacerbates it. And it would then hang into the easement. We talked to REA about doing something with that easement, and they want to keep it as it is. They're open to putting additional power lines to accommodate any adjustments in grade. But really, we have to respect that easement. So that's how, that's how it got pushed as far to the east as it is. This new station is more of a community asset, and it does accommodate more functional uses than the existing station did. But that's for the benefit of Boulder County.
Thanks. Is the applicant amenable to doing some screening across the street?
I would have to defer to the district's representatives for that.
Sorry, what was that? So screening, but not on their property?
Yeah. Across the street.
Okay, but that would be on the neighbor's property?
On the neighbor's property.
Okay.
So I guess, speaking for the district, you know, this is something that just brought up to us. I guess we'd have to talk amongst ourselves. I'm not sure that is typically normal. And who would be responsible if the plants got planted or the trees? Also, any concerns on blind spots as we plant those close to the road for both vehicle traffic and bicycle traffic?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions before we discuss?
This is Mark again. Sean, can you put up the drawings of the station? The proposed station?
This is probably the kind of most comprehensive site plan. We can dig in and get some other things if you're interested.
No, I think this is good. I'm just curious what the... Let's see. Yeah, I mean, obviously, you couldn't screen the bays on the property because the driveway is there.
And then we're thinking the additional, this is Leishen. I hope the additional parking would help with the issue of people parking along the street and by the neighbors? Or not sure?
Is that a question for?
Yeah, that was a question, yeah, for the applicant.
So typically, our traffic parked on the road actually isn't the fire department. It's the overfill from Hile Valley Ranch. But our parking lot will double in size, so it should handle any of our Saturday trainings, any of our nightly trainings, and should handle the community trainings too.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mark again. I guess another question for the applicant. Do you, do you have the capability? Or are you allowed to? I don't know what the rules are regarding sirens and whatnot. But, you know, do you have the ability of essentially driving a little distance before you turn them on? Or is that something you already do?
Yeah, liability to us if we run into a call and if we do not have our lights and sirens on and we hit somebody, it is our fault. So typically, when those trucks start to roll down the road at night, we try to keep our sirens off until we at least get a little bit down. But it doesn't always work. Part of it is the time of year. We also run with the risk of hitting livestock or the deers that are on the road. That time of night, the sirens tend to open the roads up and keep everything out of our way too.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions before we discuss? Okay, let's discuss.
This is Ann, I'll start out. I don't have any issues with any of this. Looks like they've done a nice job designing the building, and they're willing to work with the schoolhouse. And I think our questions have been answered. So I'm fine with the recommendations that have been made by staff.
Yeah, I think I feel the same. I understand where Mark was coming from with the, you know, could we, could we screen it from the other side? Or what were the options there? But it just feels like that's beyond what we could do to try to help.
This is Mark. Yeah, I kind of agree. And certainly understand all of the complexities with setback and the easements and whatnot. Trying to squeeze it into a tough little spot there.
Any other thoughts or emotion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Boulder County Planning Commission conditionally approved docket LE-20-0001, Left Hand Fire Protection District Station, subject to the conditions presented in the packet.
Sam Fitch, second to motion.
Any discussion before roll call? All right, roll call, Ann.
Yay.
Dan.
Yay.
Melanie?
Yay.
This is Leishen, yay. Mark?
Yay.
Sam Fitch?
Yay.
Sam Libby?
Yay.
Todd?
Yay.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, this is our fifth and final docket for this evening. Docket SI-20-00- Docket SI-20-0002 Bobtail-Tungsten Pipeline Alternate Route.
Hello, everyone. This is Summer Frederick with Community Planning and Permitting. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
And can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so this is docket SI-20-0002 Tungsten to Bobtail Natural Gas Pipeline. Okay. There we go. So this is an areas and activities of state interest, otherwise known as a 1041 review. For the construction of an alternative route of the previously approved pipeline, it was approved under docket SI-190001 at a Board of County Commissioners hearing on July 9, 2019. That also came before you in 2019. The proposal is for an eight-inch diameter natural gas pipeline of approximately two miles in length. It will serve as an extension to the existing natural pipeline delivery system that is owned and operated and maintained by PSCO, an Excel Energy Company. A control valve station will also be constructed to service this new pipeline connection. The majority of the pipeline will be or is proposed to be constructed within the CDOT right-of-way along Highway 119 between the Gilpin County line and north to the intersection of Magnolia with the valve station proposed to be constructed on US Forest Service property just to the west of this intersection at the West Magnolia Trailhead site. The applicant is Excel Energy. The agent is Stephanie Fippen from Tetra Tech. And the property owners involved are the Forest Service, Boulder County, and CDOT. So as I said, the proposal is to install a new eight-inch diameter pipeline within the public right-of-way. The pipeline length will be approximately two miles. The controlled valve station will be constructed on US Forest Service-owned parcel and it will, that's where it will tie into the existing pipeline. The trench excavation will be maximum 63 inches deep and 24 to 48 inches wide with an additional 12 inches on each each side for asphalt. There's ongoing coordination with CDOT to construct and operate the project as well as with the US Forest Service in regards to the final location for the valve station construction. There will be no new cross culverts associated with this project. The pipeline will go under or over existing road culverts, excuse me. So this project will strengthen PSCO's ability to continue to provide natural gas reliability and safety to current and future customers in both Boulder and Gilpin Counties. It will increase gas capacity and reinforce the overall natural gas system by installing a new pipeline extension from the existing Louisville-Rollins Pass pipeline to the existing system in Blackhawk. And it will provide redundancy of the existing gas system by providing multiple gas sources in the area. So as I mentioned earlier, a similar pipeline was brought before you and the Board of County Commissioners in early 2019. And so the need for this alternate location comes from residents on South Beaver Creek Road, which is located in Gilpin County, raised concerns and with the accessibility and construction delays during installation because some of the developments were only are only accessible from South Beaver Creek Road. And so there are similar concerns for Boulder County residents that live along County Road 97, which is the original per the original approved location of this pipeline. And there were concerns about hitting substantial amounts of groundwater along South Beaver Creek Road. And so the concerns that were raised with the full width closure of South Beaver Creek Road in Gilpin County, those concerns carried over to the roads where the proposed location of the pipeline are in Boulder County. So for some context, this is the vicinity map with the previously approved location shown here in orange. And this is the current proposal shown here in green. And so these are two both locations shown on the same map. As you can see, the current current proposal is here along 119. And up here are the two alternate locations for the control valve station. This is closer up, so as you can see, it comes from the Gilpin County line down here in the south, comes up along Highway 119 to Magnolia Road, which runs east-west here along the top of this image. And then the Hall Road comes off 119 down here at the southern proposed location for the control valve. And here at the northern location for proposed location for a control valve is where the West Magnolia Trailhead is, as well as the associated parking. So this is the comprehensive plan map. As you can see, there is a lot going on in this area. And so there are some critical wildlife habitats, there's some wildlife migration corridors, riparian area, some wetlands, significant natural communities. This area is the peak-to-peak scenic corridor. And as you can see, the view protection scores along Highway 119 here are relatively high. Here are public lands. Again, the northern portion of the proposed construction is where the two alternative sites for the valve station are, and both of those will be located on Forest Service property. So here's an aerial of the proposed location. And again, those are the two sites that are proposed for the control valve station. There they are in a little bit closer up. As you can see, coming in here from the east is Magnolia Drive, where it intersects with 119. This is the Hall Road that continues on. This is the parking lot for the trailhead. This outlined in red is the location of the northern alternative for the control station. And then here, outlined in orange, is the southern. Here is the the site plan for these locations. This one is the north, and as you can see, the outlines may be a little difficult, but this is the general outline of that area. And here is the southern, excuse me, proposed alternative site. As you can see, this is the Hall Road that comes in here, so it's located just to the west of that. So staff and has determined that the preferred location for the proposed valve station is this northern station, or I'm sorry, this northern site. It is just north of the already existing parking area for the trailhead. It already has some disturbance in that area. And so it would not, it would also require the least amount of work along the county right-of-way here on the Hall Road, which is County Highway 132. And here it is in a little cleaner view. So in this general area here that's outlined in red is the is staffed staff's preferred location for the control valve station. So this was referred out to the regular agencies and departments. And some referral comments of note, the Building Safety and Inspection Services team indicated that grading permits and plan reviews and inspections are required for the proposed work. Excuse me. They provided wind and snow loads for any structures that were to be placed with in association with the control valve station. And also indicated that defensible space and ignition-resistant construction would be required for those structures as well. The Boulder County Engineering Development Review staff noted that this new proposed alignment is nearly entirely in the CDOT right-of-way and feels that CDOT comments and concerns should be addressed prior to permitting. They also indicated that if any staging areas are to be located in county right-of-way, staging plan needs to be provided and that all of the work within the county right-of-way needs to meet applicable standards and requirements. Obviously, wildfire mitigation is required for any structures associated with the control valve station site. The Natural Resource Planner for Boulder County noted that the area where the construction is proposed is representative of Montane communities. He also identified the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan designations in the area. And he noted that though the scope of work is extensive, there are no significant natural resource impacts anticipated. He also indicated that the trees along the right-of-way should be preserved as much as possible and that tree removal must comply with federal bird protection requirements. Colorado Parks and Wildlife recommended that the applicant work with the county and the Forest Service to avoid the conflict with the recreation users at the trailhead with regards to the construction of one of the valve stations. And that the crew should attempt to keep the parking area nearby intersection clear. Excuse me, and that construction should be done when should try and be done when recreation use is low, and so the users would be affected the least. They also noted the requirements for tree removal to be done to protect birds. And that nesting birds needed to be buffered during construction. And coordination with US Forest Service on tree removal, wildlife-safe fencing, and that nighttime work should be minimized in order to mitigate light pollution and nearby trailhead access. And that protocol for inadvertent chemical releases or sedimentation into creeks be applied. CDOT raised a number of requirements and questions. Staff notes that the applicant is continues to work with CDOT and that CDOT permits will be required before any construction can be undertaken. Adjacent property owners, we sent out 72 notifications. We received three comments back within the notification period. We also received a few more recently, some of which have been forwarded to you, one of which I received late this afternoon. Comments from those adjacent property owners included questions about where the pipeline was going, raised concerns about other projects happening in Boulder County that have affected traffic to the area, namely, this is the Boulder Canyon closure closures related to roadwork there. Questions and concerns were raised related to the final location of the control valve station with the consensus being that the northern location is preferred by residents in the area. And then this afternoon, I received a question related to who the pipeline will serve. And the applicant has indicated that the new pipeline is to serve both existing and new gas customers. There were several agencies that reviewed the proposal and had no conflicts or comments, including Boulder County Historic Review, Boulder County Parts and Open Space, Boulder County Road Maintenance, and Excel. So this was reviewed in for conformance with standards for activities of state interest, or 1041s, which are contained in Article 8-511. And so some of those, some of that analysis worth mentioning. Criteria B5 relates to air quality, visual quality, surface water quality, groundwater quality, terrestrial and aquatic life, soils and geological conditions. And so related to that, impacts would only occur during construction, within the limits of construction, and the running of the facility would not produce any particulates. Structures at the valve station will be set back from the road and screened, fenced with some sort of fencing, whether it's chain link or otherwise. And the buildings would be similar in color to the surrounding landscape. State and county stormwater permits are required for erosion control, and that will protect surface water quality. There will be limited disturbance proposed on undeveloped land, except at the valve station because the primary route will be within existing right-of-way. There is a dust suppression plan included in the water amounts that were provided in application materials. There is a recommended condition of approval requiring a revegetation plan, and that will protect existing vegetation and ensure post-construction revegetation and long-term visual quality. Impacts to wetlands and riparia areas are mitigated through design and BMPs. And there's also a recommended condition of approval related to required monitoring and reporting. And so B6, the effects on recreational opportunities. There are obviously going to be some impacts to the recreational opportunities at the West Magnolia Trailhead. And so the applicant is coordinating with the US Forest Service Recreation Staff to make sure that those impacts are minimized to users during the construction and operation. Criteria BH is related to blight noise and odor, odor, excuse me. The new pipeline will be completely below ground and only the valve station will be above ground. So that should mitigate some of the impacts. And the restricted work hours and utility construction permit conditions will mitigate noise and odor during construction. Criteria B15, complete reasonably foreseeable development is considered. This new line will increase the reliability and capacity of the pipeline and delivery system and provide an improved and reliable supply of natural gas service to current and future customers. This was also reviewed against the standards for major facilities of a public utility in Article 8-511E, as well as the standards for development in geologic hazard areas in Article 8-511L. And staff found that the application materials, as well as the recommended conditions of approval, allowed for this application to meet all of these criteria. And so the, I'm sorry, the Community Planning and Permitting staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SI-20-0002 Tungsten to Bobtail Pipeline Alternate Route with specific recommended conditions of approval found in the staff recommendation packet. And I have those specific recommendations of recommended conditions of approval on screen if needed for further discussion. And the applicant is here and does have a presentation.
Summer, is it okay if I go now?
Not quite yet.
No, we're going to do questions from the commission to Summer first. All right, hearing none, I'll invite Craig Eichner up to do the presentation for the applicant.
Thank you so much. I genuinely appreciate this opportunity. I'm Craig Eicher. I am the area manager for Excel Energy for the Boulder County region. And I want to thank you for enduring Excel Energy Day at the Planning Commission. We didn't plan it this way, but I'm glad, first of all, I want to thank you especially for the approval of our solar garden. You just, we all have to feel excited that this is putting us on the path towards our carbon-free future in 2050. So that was a huge deal, and thank you so much for that. And today, I think, Summer, thank you again for doing such a good job of summarizing. We don't really need to go into so much detail. And today, I think Summer, thank you again for doing such a good job of summarizing. We don't really need to go into so much detail in our slideshow now thankfully, and we're just basically going to express to you you know, why we're here and that is, of course, people watching at home wondering if we weren't just in front of you a few months ago asking to build an 8-inch natural gas pipeline. Of course, this is the same one. It's just because we've had to, we've learned from experience. We've learned that there's a better path for this project to minimize impact to the local community. I live not far from this project in Coal Creek Canyon. I'm keenly aware of how people feel up in my area about the traffic problems we already have on Highway 72 through Coal Creek Canyon and in and around Nederland. We're going to try to minimize that to the best extent possible and that's why we're here today. And Stephanie Fippen, my colleague, is going to be driving the slides. We're on slide one. We can go to slide two. Also with me today will be Randy Blank, the project manager, Cheryl Diedrich, our right-of-way permits manager, as well as Eric Heidegger, our contractor, construction contractor, and as I said, Stephanie Fippen, who's in charge of our permitting and environmental support. So today we're going to talk to you about the reroute. Why we're going in a different direction and why we believe it's better for your constituents. We'll also just very high level talk about the benefits that we talked about last time. When your body and the county commission approved this project first time around. We'll show you where we are in the construction because we already are. We already have constructed the majority of the project in the neighboring county. We'll show you how we're going to minimize the impact on natural resources, restore the property and all of the land and roads to their at least current condition or better. We'll show you how we're communicating with our public. And we have one small request on the conditions of approval and we'll get into that in just a moment. Next slide. As I mentioned, this is a reroute request. The picture, I'm sorry, the route on the right, the yellow route shows what we have already gotten approval from you and from the county commission. As you see that it runs right along Highway 72. And it starts way down at the bottom on South Beaver Creek Road. And this entire route would have required us to have rolling full closures of these roadways. At the time, we thought it was the best route because it was the most direct. And it was in line with what we were doing already in Gilpin County. But since our project began in Gilpin County, we realized that the concept of full closures on these roadways was just not acceptable, not acceptable to the people who live there and not acceptable to our crews. It's just too much stress and it's not practical. So we're proposing today to stay on Highway 119 and go up 119 to meet with this pipeline all the way up at at the area that Summer was just showing you. This is, this is simply what we're doing. So we would like to have an approval for this reroute as well as the location of the valve facility that, that she talked with you about already. Slide four. So the benefits to Boulder County is that everybody knows we're in the process of you know, Colorado is growing. And the natural gas demand in this region is, is increasing. Not to mention the fact that we feel like for resiliency purposes, we want to have this extra feed of gas to the mountainous region in western Boulder County and Gilpin Counties as well as Clear Creek. So this is going to bring in an alternate source for gas for this area and it's going to allow us to meet the demands of this growing region. It's important that we have this built by this winter. This past winter season, we were seeing, you know, nothing serious just yet, but we know that our gas pressures in this region are beginning to become at capacity. And so we can't let that happen. It's our obligation to, to meet the demands of our customers. And that's what this project is all about. It provides operational flexibility and resiliency during abnormal operating conditions such as extreme weather. We've had a lot of cold nights up here this past winter. Next. We're progressing pretty well. We've already built nine miles of this project from Blackhawk up through Gilpin County and we're now knocking on the door of Boulder County. And this, of course, we're at the juncture, as you can see, between going to the left or going to the right as we had already been approved to do. So we're just waiting for this approval and for the county commission to approve it. So that we can begin construction and ensure that we have this project in service by the peak heating season next year. We're, we're going to be working very closely with our folks in Netherlands because, and Rollinsville. All along the course of this route to make sure that these folks are completely and up to speed on what we're doing and we coordinate with everybody that we need to. Next slide. The features, of course, in Boulder County, we're talking about out of the total project, just two miles being in your county, again, an 8-inch natural gas pipeline. US Forest Service has already provided us input on this and I was part of the meeting, by the way, when we had the Forest Service meet us out at the locations of the proposed locations for the valve set. They were the ones who actually pointed to the northern location as a possible as a possible option and we kind of immediately liked it. I mean, there are a number of really great reasons why that one is better. First of all, the, the tree line that's right along the road and is actually on a little slight berm and it actually hides the area where we're going to be putting this, where we would build this. It's underneath an existing power line, so there's already utility facilities in the area. It involves less piping to get to it. And the other location in the south, since it has quite a slope to it, would require us to build a retaining wall. And it would be very close to an existing trail, so more people would encounter it as they're enjoying the trails in this area. So we're really hopeful that you agree with us that it's, it's the better of the two alternatives. Next. So we're going to minimize impact to resources as we always do. It's going to be buried entirely underground with the exception of that above-ground valve set. It'll be primarily in right-of-way in Highway 119. And we will make sure that we minimize the impact to the environment, to all of the water resources. We're coordinating, as I said, with the USFS, the CDOT, Gilpin County, the Corps of Engineers, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, as well as the Union Pacific Railroad. All of those are engaged with us in approvals. Next, we're going to be restoring to pre-construction conditions. This is an example of what we have already done in Gilpin County. This is Dory Hill Road. And as you can see, we're restoring the road and any of the surrounding area that we impact to pre-construction conditions. Next, safety, obviously on the minds of not just us, but on, of our stakeholders in the community. There are two ways we approach safety, of course, in the actual construction of the project. And then the ongoing operation of the pipeline. As we talked in our original 1041 hearings, we have an extensive process for dealing with safety. During construction, we have a third-party company that actually inspects this project ongoing, actually looks at the welds and verifies that each one is complete. We make sure that the pipe is coated and it has cathodic protection against corrosion for the long-term protection. As I said, we do weld inspections, non-destructive testing, x-rays. We pressure test this pipeline up to one and a half times of its maximum pressure before we put it into service. Post-construction, we do inline inspections. In fact, this photograph that you see right now is of an inline inspection tool. And it is able to go down the pipeline and tell us all sorts of things about the pipeline from inside. It can tell you how thick the pipeline is, if it has had any wear and tear over the years. It can look for corrosion, all sorts of things. We do annual leak surveys of the entire line. Excavation monitoring, when someone else has to come out and dig near it. We will go there and watch them dig near our pipeline and help them avoid it. And it's going to have a new SCADA monitoring system, which basically tells us 24/7 if the pressure changes at all. It can allow us to remotely operate valves and shut off the pipeline if there is some sort of a catastrophic occurrence. So there are a lot of ways that we are addressing the safety issue here and we want to ensure that the folks who live near it or who are being served by it, understand that we take nothing more serious, more seriously than the safety of this pipeline, both installing it and operating it over time. And engaging with stakeholders. We are, next slide, we are working very hard to open all of the channels available to us and to our, to our community and any stakeholder. And having a steady flow of information about the ongoing project that we're talking about here. We're advertising, we're doing direct mailers, we're talking directly with people. We'll be meeting with the town of Netherlands, assuming approval here today to go over our traffic plans, to help them communicate with their town so that people know what to expect as they're going to work and trying to get through the construction areas. And finally, we do have one request regarding the conditions of approval. For that, I would like to ask Stephanie Fippen to jump in and outline that for you.
Great. Thanks Craig. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. So again, Stephanie Fippen and just wanted to go over this one suggested condition of approval here and give you a little bit of background on that. So we want to note upfront that the project will absolutely comply with the migratory bird treaty act, which prohibits take of most birds or nests. For reference, the project requires tree removal only in the small area. That includes the tungsten station we've been talking about and that short stations tie into the main line. So for background, Colorado Parks and Wildlife publishes recommended seasonal timelines to prevent impacts to nesting birds in Colorado. And as Summer noted in her comments, we reached out proactively to Colorado Parks and Wildlife during the early planning stages and requested their input. They responded that tree removal activities could be completed in this window here specified in this condition between September 1st and February 15th. If, if a nesting bird survey was conducted within two weeks of the planned tree removal and identified that there were no active nests or nesting activities. So for the commission's reference, we had a qualified avian biologist go out and conduct a preliminary nesting bird survey already just last Tuesday on April 7th. And he noted no nests or nesting activities in that small tree removal area. And the, the condition here would commit the project to completing another nesting bird survey within two weeks of planned tree removal. So if no nests are identified, then we would remove the trees in compliance with the migratory bird treaty act. You know, if you want to look at the specific letter from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, I did make a note to myself of what page that's on in your packet and I'm happy to direct you there if that's helpful. And then lastly, just for context, the reason we asked for this modification is because, as Craig explained already, the project must be put in service by the end of September to avoid, to, to, to meet the overall schedule, to make sure we've got the right supply of gas and capacity for this upcoming winter season. And so meeting that schedule will require us to start removing trees from that tungsten station before September 1st. And so that is the only reason we ask for that flexibility. If we find that there are no nests or nesting activities in the area, we would just ask for this minor modification. Back to you Craig.
Thank you. And finally, if you for the sake of everyone here and of course, folks in the community who are watching, our contact, contact information is on the final slide. I'm here, I'm available. Cheryl, my senior right-of-way and permits agent is available. And we are open to any of your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. What questions do we have for Excel?
I guess I might have a question for staff related to Excel. Is it, can I do that now? Or is that, do I wait?
I think you can, you can ask now if you'd like.
It might be, it might be a question for Ron just about his thoughts on that change to the timeframe.
So.
Leishen, sorry.
I think, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. I think Ron is here, but I can also chime in and say that Ron and I had a brief discussion about it. And he seemed to be okay with the proposed edits to that, to that particular condition. Ron, if you want to chime in, feel free.
Ron is okay.
Thank you. What other questions do we have before we open for public comment? Okay, then I would like to open this docket for public comment. As of now, we have no one signed up. If you would like to speak, please unmute yourself, give us your name and your address and we will start the timer.
Okay, hearing none, I will close the docket for public comments. And then open it back up for discussion. Commissioners, any other questions or discussion on this docket?
Yeah, Sam, I just wanted to say, I guess, I feel like we talked quite a bit last time this came before us about a lot of topics around safety and testing and location. There was a lot of discussion about a path underneath a river, which is, I think is no longer an issue because of the change in location. A lot of questions ahead of the time were already answered at that point. My only other comment was just that I think there was an interest in more, more reporting from Excel to the county in some way about safety testing and any leaks that happened or anything that is detected in that way. We didn't have anything formal in our approval, but that was a topic that came up and still remains of interest. I'm pretty happy with the changes. It seems less impactful to me and more straightforward than it was. And the addition of that change to the condition around the tree removal seems fine to me as well, so I'm supportive.
Yeah, this is Leishen. Back to that, the testing thing, there was like an automatic testing and then he was talking about that third-party service and just the county being aware. I'm trying to remember the conversation because I vaguely remember it from last time.
Yeah, I think, I think my recollection, maybe Summer remembers, I don't know.
Yes, so the conditions of, the recommended conditions of approval for this this proposal related to reporting and the rest of it reflect what was approved by both the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners for the previous pipeline. So the same standards are in place for this application as were approved and finalized for the previous one.
Thank you for remembering our past for us.
All right, do we have any other discussion or motion?
I can make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move the Planning Commission conditionally approved docket LE 20-0001. Oops, sorry, reading the wrong thing. The wrong tab open. I'll try again in a second. We pulled it up. If anyone sees who has it up, can go ahead and make a motion.
I recommend that the Planning Commission recommends the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approved docket SI-20-0002.
This is Mark Bloomfield, all second.
Do you want, excuse me, sorry to interrupt, but do you want to make clear that with the condition as modified by the applicant?
Yes, yes, thank you. I would also, with the condition.
I would also, with the condition, was it 15 as modified by the applicant?
Okay.
I will second that modification.
Hi, Leishen, this is Anna. I apologize, but would you be willing to reread?
Yes.
Your solution, you cut out at the end of the original text. Thank you.
Okay. I recommend that the Planning Commission recommend that the Boulder, or I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SI-20-0002 bobtail tungsten pipeline alternate route with the conditions as listed, but condition 15 edited to reflect the applicant's changes from their, as in their presentation.
And I will second. It's Mark.
Any further discussion before we roll call? All right, Ann.
Yay.
Dan.
Yay.
Melanie.
Yay.
This is Leishen, yay. Mark.
Yay.
Sam Fitch.
Yes.
Sam Libby.
Yay.
Todd.
Yeah.
It passes.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, and thank you for that marathon and for bearing with us through our first remote meeting. Congratulations, everyone.
Very well, I'm surprised, and thank you for all your work. We appreciate your help.
We might have to do a seventh inning stretch next time.
Have a great night, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks to staff for wrangling all of this.
I think the commissioners need to move to close the.
Yeah.
Hearing.
Oh, did we lose Leishen?
I moved, we closed the meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
All in favor, yeah.
Aye.
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 All right. Are we closed?
Oh, it looks like that was approved.
That works, you're fine. Thank you so much for making this work, everyone.
Thanks, commissioners.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye.
Everybody stay well.
Yes, be well.